Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for joining us for the August 19th Board of Supervisors meeting. And I'm looking out here and I'm seeing a huge crowd. How nice it is to see you all here this evening. I can't imagine why, but I have a feeling that there's something there. Okay, I'll call the meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Mr. Holroyd.
Present.
Mrs. Knoll.
Here.
Mr. Drury.
Present.
Mr. Roan.
Here.
Mr. Schufford. Madam Chairman, you have a quorum.
This evening, we have Pastor Doug Echols of the Bethel Baptist Church to give the invocation. Good to see you.
Mrs. Knoll and Board of Supervisors, thank you for this opportunity. Shall we pray together? Heavenly Father, we come before you tonight with grateful hearts. We recognize you as our Creator and our Sustainer and our Redeemer. You are the giver of wisdom, the source of truth, and the one who cares deeply about every person in our community. Lord, we thank you for these men and women who have been entrusted with leadership on this Board of Supervisors. We ask that you bless them with clear minds, discerning hearts, and the courage to do what is right. Father, we know that leadership is not easy. The weight of decisions can be heavy, the voices of concern many, and the needs of the people great. So tonight, I ask that you may grant each supervisor patience in listening, humility in serving, and strength to persevere when challenges arise. May their work be marked by fairness, compassion, and a true desire to promote the well-being of all. Lord, we lift up to you our community tonight, the families, the police, and first responders, the students, the elderly, and the vulnerable. As our children go back to school next week, we pray for the bus drivers, the teachers, the administrators, the parents, and the students, that you would surround them with your protection and your provision. Finally, Lord, I pray that everything that is said and done in this meeting tonight would be guided by integrity, respect, and desire to honor you. We pray your blessing on this gathering, on this community, and on the leaders that serve. It's in the name of Jesus, our Savior, we pray. Amen.
Thank you. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic in which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. We have a lot of presentations, as you all can imagine. I'm going to go by the script so I don't really make a mistake, but I probably will. Okay, I'll call Mr. Hurst, Board of Code Appeals, for 20 years working for the county. Is that the hallway at the end there? Come join me up here. 20 years. What made you stay so long?
Nothing else to do.
But you know, Board of Code and Appeals, I mean, that's really a difficult job, isn't it? Or do you have a sense of humor that you can get through it?
Sometimes. It's pretty good. The inspectors do a good job keeping people straight, so we don't have much to do.
So you don't have too much to do. Well, I don't believe that for a minute. But anyway, I have flowers for you, and I have your county charge card, coin.
Charge card?
That's it. No, no, not a charge card, it's a charge coin. But you know, if you use that, if you don't have it with you and someone asks you if you have it, you gotta buy drinks, so you better keep it in your pocket all the time. But most importantly, it's a certificate appreciation for all the time and all the work that you have done for the county. Thank you so very much. Any comments from the board? I think I've probably said too much as it is already.
Congratulations and thanks for staying as long. We appreciate your service.
You know, that's one of the things we are so proud of here in the county, the longevity of our staff, because that shows that the working conditions that they have are satisfying. And the jobs that they do, they get recognition for. And everybody needs that type of recognition. So now I'm going to call on Michelle Justiniano for the volunteer report presentation. Okay.
Thank you, Chairman Knoll. Good evening, everyone, board members, Mr. Bellamy, and esteemed guests. My name is Michelle Justiniano, and I am the Management Analyst in Community Services. It is my great honor to present the Outstanding Volunteer Awards this evening. But before we get to the fun part, I will try my best not to bore you with some overall highlights about the York County Volunteer Services for calendar year 2024. So these are some of the highlights of our 2024 volunteer services. The boards and commissions and committees serve in an advisory capacity, recommending various issues facing the county. They can be found within eight departments: County Admin, Community Services, Economic and Tourism Development, Finance, Human Resources, the Library, Planning and Development Services, and Public Works. The groups, 30 groups that are up there include various agencies and organizations, and you may hear of a few in another slide that's coming right up. The eight programs are found in four different departments, including Fire and Life Safety, Public Works, York-Pococin Sheriff's Office, and the Virginia Cooperative Extension. And the office, the department that uses the office support interns is the Commonwealth Attorney's Office. Some additional highlights, the library also uses volunteers through the Friends of Library Foundation. Public Works cleanup projects include Clean the Bay, Adopt a Spot, and the Great American Cleanup. Economic and Tourism Development oversees the gallery, Market Days, Celebrate Yorktown, Art at the River, July Fourth Parade, just to name a few. There are 55 volunteers in social services that have provided 625 hours. And more than half of the volunteers at Parks and Recreation were dedicated coaches and assistant coaches, and there were also working groups that provided educational programs at New Quarter Park. And this is the last slide with a few more highlights. Children and Family Services received assistance from the Food Bank, Kiwanis, Americor, Old Town Medical and Dental, Lions Club, and many local churches. Fire and Life Safety utilizes volunteers for their CERT and emergency operations. York-Pococin Sheriff's Office has dare and auxiliary deputy sheriffs. And the last highlight includes volunteers who worked with Housing Department. So overall, there were 1,838 volunteers who donated 66,699 volunteer hours and provided over $58,000 in monetary and in-kind donations. And Ms. Knoll, this is the fun part. So what is the total value of volunteer services in 2024?
You are the unsung heroes, all the volunteers, and you are part of the fabric of York County. And you see how much the work that you do pays off and how much you are saving our county, but that's not the point. The point is that you are putting forth time and effort to make York County what it is. And the board stands behind you 100%, and we are so pleased that you continue year after year after year to volunteer your services. So thank you. It sounds only two little words, but they mean so much, and we have to thank you for it again and again and again. So guys, look at this. Now, what are we going to do with it?
You stay right here.
Okay, I'll stay right here.
The Outstanding Volunteer Awards, the annual Outstanding Volunteer Awards recognize exemplary volunteers supporting county government and departments and agencies and are representative of our more than 1,800 dedicated volunteers. Kevin Ritchie, please come forward and present the award to the 2024 Outstanding Volunteer
No, thank you. You have done such a remarkable, remarkable job. First of all, you were at the Waterman's Museum, and then you came over for Celebrate Yorktown, and people shop there all the time. And the money that you raise goes towards all the things that the Celebrate Yorktown Committee does, including the concert. And that is truly a very big, big contribution. So when you read in the newspaper that you see that there's a York County is having the Virginia Symphony coming, these people who work for Celebrate Yorktown and Sharon does a huge job for that, they raise the funds so that we can pay for the concert to be here. The concert's not a freebie. It's only free to you, but not free to those who raised the money for it. They work very hard all year so they can give you this gift, and I hope you all turn out for it. And you have Sharon Owens, 2024 Volunteer of the Year, 2,269 hours of volunteer service. This is an appreciation of the outstanding volunteer commitment, Sharon. I know that, but I knew you were doing something like that. You want to say a few words? And now we know why we have you lovely people here tonight. Sharon, would you like to say a few words?
I have a great team. Thank you. I've never seen myself so much in my life. Thank you, volunteers. You mean a lot to me, and you know that.
All right, I've got a few things that I wanted to add. It is my distinct pleasure to do this. Sharon and I go way back, obviously, 23 years plus. But I'm Kevin Ritchie, the event manager with the Department of Economic and Tourism Development. Thank you, Chairman Knoll, members of the board, Mr. Bellamy. So a little history here. Gallery York Hall opened in 2002 as a unique partnership between the Celebrate Yorktown Committee and York County, designed to showcase local and regional art while also serving as an information center on Main Street for residents and visitors. From day one, it's been more than a gallery. It's been a vibrant cultural hub and extension of our community's spirit. At the heart of the success is volunteer manager Sharon Owen, who has led the gallery with passion and purpose for more than 23 years. Under her leadership, the gallery has provided a platform for hundreds of artists to share their work while also generating funds to support sheriff's community programs like the annual Virginia Symphony Concert held each Labor Day weekend, free and open to the public, as well as other local museums, historic sites, and performing art events. Sharon leads a team of 25-plus volunteers, but she leads by example, logging extraordinarily 2,269 volunteer hours in 2024 alone and represents nearly half of the total of the 5,842 hours contributed by the gallery last year. This equates to an average of 50 hours a week and often more, giving her time, energy, and heart to Yorktown. She continues to spearhead the beloved tradition like the annual Cookies with Santa event, bringing joy to families that come to York Hall each holiday season. She rotates the exhibits and makes sure that they're dynamic and relevant and keeps the locals and visitors coming back time and time again. As our director, Kristi Olden shared, and I quote, "I continue to be in awe of Sharon's tireless commitment, her kindness, and the way she goes above and beyond for Yorktown, its residents, and visitors. Sharon, you embody the spirit of service. This honor couldn't go to a more deserving person. Congratulations. Sharon, your dedication is inspiring, your impact is measurable, and your legacy undeniable. On behalf of York County, we thank you and proudly recognize you as our 2024 Volunteer
Sharon, Sharon, Sharon.
I don't know what to say. Thank you all here. Are we good, Kevin?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
How many hours for 2024?
Now, if we had so many people. Sheriff Montgomery, I think this is your part of the presentation.
Sorry, we have one more.
One more?
Megan Tierney, can you come forward and present the award to the 2025 Outstanding Volunteer Organization of the Year?
Which one is that?
Hi Sheila, how are you doing?
Hello.
Catherine, right up. So good evening, everyone. I'd like to take a couple of minutes to recognize and sincerely thank the incredible volunteers who make our Virginia Cooperative Extension program not only possible but impactful and truly inspiring. In 2004 alone, our volunteers contributed over 20,000 hours of service. That's an economic value of more than $667,000, equivalent to the work of at least 13 full-time staff. That's not just impressive, it's extraordinary. Through your dedication of time, energy, and expertise, you're making a real difference in our community, whether through healthy Virginia lawn visits that help reduce excessive fertilizer use, the countless hours spent answering help desk questions, responding to tree calls, or conducting landscape visits. You're creating a healthier, more sustainable environment for everyone. You've maintained our demonstration gardens, not just for their beauty, but to educate homeowners on smart, cost-effective planting choices. You've helped people save money, protect natural resources, and feel confident in caring for their own landscapes. You've trained year-round to serve as positive youth leaders at the 4H Junior Overnight Camp, where more than 160 youth are unplugged from technology and engage in outdoor learning activities and sports. Teen counselor volunteers gained valuable leadership experience, and many of you supported year-long 4H clubs, providing youth with consistent access to enriching curriculum. You've supported community gardens, increased access to fresh produce, educated the public about pollinators and biodiversity, and represented our programs at events with both passion and expertise. Every task you take on, whether center stage or behind the scenes, moves our mission forward, and you do it all as volunteers. That is the very definition of generosity. Tonight, we're proud to recognize Catherine Bresnan, accepting this award on behalf of all York-Pococin VCE volunteers, as a former Master Gardener Volunteer Coordinator and the current Master Gardener Association Chair. Catherine truly embodies the heart and spirit of this amazing team. Please join me in congratulating Catherine and in thanking all of our VCE volunteers for their outstanding service.
I have been a fan of the gardeners ever since I came on the board. You all do such a fantastic job, and the education that you give others, you know, I wish I had had it. But congratulations and continued good work.
Absolutely, and we'll see you at the next plant sale.
Yes, you will. Now, I think maybe Sheriff, if I've got the right page.
Good evening, Madam Chairman, members of the board. Tonight, it's my distinct privilege to present to you three employees of the York-Pococin Sheriff's Office that have all recently passed the 20-year mark of service to the County of York. First, I'm going to introduce Kristen Crowe. Kristen began as a work as required employee with the Commissioner of Revenue in April of 2005. She became full-time with the Commissioner of Revenue's office in August of 2005, and then in October of 16, of 2006, she made the great decision to leave that position and come to work for the York-Pococin Sheriff's Office, and we're very grateful for that decision. She started as an administrative assistant I. She's worked her way up over the years. She's currently an administrative technician. Kristen Crowe.
Kristen, congratulations so much. I mean, that's what I'm talking about when I talk about people working for the county.
Thank you.
Next, I want to introduce to you Jessica Ovayet. Jessica started with the Sheriff's Office on August 22, 2005. She began her career as an administrative assistant II. She's since gone through the promotion process as administrative technician, and she's currently an administrative III, where she supervises three full-time administrative technician and a work as required employee as well. Jessica Ovayet.
Congratulations. So glad to be open. You might want to open and see what it is. I want to see what it is, too. Maybe it's... Okay, all right. Which way is it? Oh, it's her pin and her certificate for the number of years that she's worked for the county, and that's very, very special.
Thank you.
Congratulations. And last, but certainly not least, I want to introduce to you Master Deputy James Cox. And I want to acknowledge that his wife Lisa is here as well tonight. James came to us from the William &amp; Merrick Police Department in July of 2005 as a Uniform Patrol Officer. Prior to that, and prior to being with William &amp; Merrick, he served his country in the United States Navy for 20 years and four months. Since becoming to the Sheriff's Office, he initially was a patrol officer. He's been promoted to the Deputy First Class. He's currently a Master Deputy. He was assigned to Uniform Patrol from 2005 to 2016. In 2016, he was assigned to the Court Security Division, Civil Process, where he obtained the distinction of being the lead bailiff in the general district court. Not long after that is when he became one of our three civil deputies. So congratulations to Master Deputy James Cox for 20 years of service.
Congratulations, and I'll take thank you for your service.
Thank you very much.
All right. Now we have information technology. Howard Jean Goodwin.
So hopefully Jean Goodwin can jump out from the back.
Hey, Jean. Yeah, I'll come.
So Jean Goodwin's the county's video engineer. Obviously, he doesn't get a night off. He's integral to all the broadcasts for both the Board of Supervisors, the School Board of Meetings, Plan Commission, and other items. He's seen technology change over the 20 years and has been a key person on video, both out in the field, here in York Hall, in the East Room, upstairs, and throughout the whole county. And if you've ever talked to anyone else in the video field industry in Hampton Roads, they know Jean. Jean is both known and respected across all of his peers everywhere we've gone, whether it's trade show, an industry, another locality, and we're very proud and happy he's part of York County.
Jean, he wired me up. Here you go. You got a lot of them.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. He wired me up before I got up here. And then Brian Lee, Emergency Communications. Terry, you're coming to present.
Good evening, and thanks for the opportunity to come recognize wherever he is. That's kind of Brian. He's all over the place. So Brian Lee has been with us for 20 years. It's not Brian's first trip here. Brian has worked for us three times. First time, he decided he wanted to work for the state police, so he left us for a year and came back. And then he said, you know what? I don't know if this job's right for me. So he went to work in the banking and became an assistant manager at a bank. And he called me up one day. He said, would you entertain hiring me for a third time? And that's been 20 years ago, and it has been a real pleasure working for Brian. Anyone who works for county government knows Brian and knows Brian's reputation. Brian is just like this. You're looking from one place, and he pops up somewhere else. In the 911 Center, if we get really busy, there's a button that the dispatcher pushes, and you push the button, and it sets off an alert in the building telling everybody, we've got a hot call, it's going to get busy. We're in a staff meeting, Brian will go up, and everybody will remain seating because they know that Brian has it, and he's going to yell for help if he needs it. So he is our 911 Systems Manager. He takes care of an enormous amount of technology. He works very close with Tim's group and Pascal over in County IT. And Brian, I hope that you stay at least another 20 years. As I'm approaching retirement, Ray's like, whatever you do, don't make Brian mad, because I need him when you leave. So join me in thanking Brian for his 20-plus years of service.
Thank you. You know how I feel about you. Now, Jocelyn Corbin, Planning Development Services. How long have I known you, Jocelyn?
25 years, probably. Jocelyn is one of our very friendly faces in zoning and code enforcement and has been for 25 years. We're very excited. When I saw it was her 25-year anniversary, I was like, there's no way. No way. She's younger than me, a lot younger than me. But we love having Jocelyn in our department, and she always does wonderful jobs. So congratulations on 25 years.
Jocelyn, I'm so pleased. I'd like an apple. This is a biggie. Charles Lefwitch, Fire and Life Safety. It's good to see you.
Good to see you.
Go ahead.
Madam Chairman, Board of Supervisors, Mr. Bellamy. Captain Lefwitch has been with us since August of 1990, and again, risen up through the ranks. He's one of the leaders of our Fire Officer Academy and a regional basis for the Hampton Roads Fire Officers Group. Also is the captain of our Honor Guard and is qualified to be an active battalion chief, which he is doing tonight while he's here. So Captain Lefwitch has definitely seen every aspect of the department, and is just a key component of what we do, and sets a leadership standard for the rest of the organization. Thank you, Captain.
Thank you so much. Take that. Wait, 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 come back. We didn't get a picture. Now we're done. Now, Sherri, I think you have the deck. Where are you? Where are you? Parks and Recreation Division?
If you'd like to sit down, we can.
And do I get to sit down?
You do get to sit down.
Thank you. But before I go, remember what I said about the people who work for the county and how dedicated they are. And you've seen the people that have been here today that have gotten their awards. And that's because of all they've contributed and the fact that they've stayed with the county, because the county is special to them as well as to us and to all of our citizens. So even though they walked out the door, I still want to say thank you, and thank you again, and I'm looking forward to seeing a lot of you up here in the coming years. Thank you.
And Chairman Noel is so excited about receiving that check. She was literally dancing in her seat last week.
Yes.
Well, thank you for having us. I wanted to take this opportunity to introduce you to Ben Whitner. Ben is our new Parks and Recreation Manager. He came from Alamo County, out of near Charlottesville, also by way of Florida, also by way of Colorado. And so we're real excited to have him on board, and he's going to make a short presentation on what's going on in Parks and Recreation, and then hopefully answer any of your questions. He gets to use the new card, though.
Thank you, Sherri. Appreciate it. Good evening, everybody. Thank you so much for having me. It's an honor to be here. Again, my name is Ben Whitner, and Parks and Recreation Manager. I have bounced around the country, but I grew up in Richmond. My first memory of Yorktown was a fourth-grade field trip about 25 years ago, so it's not changed much since then, but I am definitely happy to be here. So the biggest thing that we're working on that actually kicked off this week is we are working with McGill Associates to conduct a comprehensive plan of the Parks and Recreation Division. The goal is to enhance the Division's structure and operations and identify long-term goals into achievable goals. The data, I'm sorry, data collection has actually already started. We have sent surveys out, or Gill has. They will actually be here this week, and then they will be here again in mid-September to collect data. They will be at certain community events throughout the county, and then they will be presenting their data and information with their plan to you all in December. So we're very excited about that. We're very excited to have data that is straight from the folks of York County. This past spring, we, just to touch on a couple of things that we do, we had our youth soccer program. We had 881 participants. We have art and fitness classes, skate, rattle, and roll, which is a program we have at Dare Elementary on Fridays during the school year, and then our storybook stroll at the MAC Athletic Complex. You can see some of our pictures here at the bottom, skate, rattle, and roll right down there in the basketball gym. And then this summer, Back Creek Park won the Revitalization 2025 Achievement Award. Very proud of that. We also had our Summer Fun Program, Safety Town, sports camps, and then, of course, our pickleball tournaments at our new pickleball courts, Back Creek Park. For our summer sports, we had over 600 participants in sports camps. That's baseball, pickleball, soccer, tennis, and volleyball. We've also started pickleball tournaments, which have been a big hit, and we have a couple of tournaments planned for this fall. So we're very excited about everything pickleball, everything sports, but mostly pickleball. Safety Town and Special Rec Camp. So Safety Town, we sold out every week this summer. We had 200 rising kindergarteners. We had 39 volunteers from York County School Division. We also had our Special Rec Camp, which is a summer camp for special needs campers. We had 17 campers in that as well. You can see some of our pictures here at the bottom. We had petting zoo. We had the fire department come out, police department for Safety Town. It was a very big hit. Summer Fun and Field Trip Fever. So we had 478 children attend Summer Fun at five elementary schools and one middle school, a total of six sites. Field Trip Fever, we had 254 children attend, split between two programs, Field Trip Fever One and Field Trip Fever Two. So it was a very busy summer, and we impacted a lot of children in York County. Our Senior Center. So we had a trip to Baltimore. We had a day trip to Jamestown. We had an ice cream social recently, and everyone is getting very excited for our trip to Lancaster here in October. In Lancaster, we have a lot of fun stuff planned. We're going to be going to the Play Noah, a guided tour of Amish country, miniature horse farm, and we also have the Virginia Zoo lined up for September, and also the Jefferson Hotel. We're going to be having a tea in September at the Jefferson Hotel in Richmond. I'm told that there is a wait list for that, so we are trying to figure out ways where we can get more folks to that, because that's going to be a big hit. Looking ahead to Fall 2025. So Fall Soccer starts in about a month. We have over 700 soccer players signed up. Skate, Rattle, and Roll returns September 5 at Dare Elementary. Senior Safety Summit is October 7. And then we have two Halloween events that we're going to be rolling out this fall as well. The New Quarter Park Spooktacular is October 18. That is a haunted trail Halloween event for middle-school-aged and up. Very excited for that new program. And then we're going to have our Second Annual Halloween Bash at the MAC on October 24. That's a trunk-or-treat, touch-a-truck event. It's going to be a lot of fun. The goal is to make these events bigger and better each year, so we're very excited to be rolling out new programs this fall. And with that, do you guys have any questions for me?
Yep, Ben, can you enlighten us as to the use we are getting out of the MAC park complex?
I can get you the exact numbers.
I don't need the exact numbers. I need their about numbers.
We are having program out there seven days a week, starting this fall. This summer, we didn't have programming every day. It's just a little bit of a slower time, but we had camps, we had AAU baseball tournaments, and we're gearing up for our soccer season. We're going to have practices and games out there six days a week, and then flag football run by another organization on Sundays. So it's going to be very, very, very busy.
So if you had to kind of guess at the number of events that we have out there that are sponsored by the county?
On an annual basis or a seasonal basis?
Right, annual.
I don't have that exact number, Sherri. Do you know that one by chance? I'm happy to get that one for you.
I don't specifically have it, but I can get it to you.
Okay. The reason I bring this up is for the Board. We go back to the time when Sheila and I had to face the concerns of the citizens about building the MAC. It wasn't a cheap operation. I think it cost $19 million. We financed $14 million of it, and my understanding is it's paid off now. But we looked at all kinds of ways of making, you know, trying to make money out of the deal to help fund activities out there, and there was a lot going on at the very beginning. If I recall, the number that was set was around 6,500 events a year. It was set for about what we thought was going to be the max amount. So it's been a long time. I've given nothing but compliments about the park. I know realtors, people buying homes, they bring people there to show them, hey, this is an amenity that's close to your home. And I just kind of, I think the Board would like, or needs to know, since we put such an investment so many years ago in that. Did it open in 2009?
Tom, I think what you want is to validate our vision.
Well, I mean, I like to know where we are with it, okay? I mean, it's all these years now, it's time, okay? So you guys can kind of give us some information on that. Appreciate it.
We can. We'll do an annual report and provide that to you.
All right, thank you.
Anybody, yes.
So glad to hear about the study you're doing. Be very interested to hear the output of that. But that's being driven by input that you receive from the citizens. I'm kind of curious what you're seeing as the overall theme from what the citizens are looking for from York County parks.
I have not seen the data yet. They have, it's been completely done by McGill. They created the surveys. They're going to be running the events. I'm unsure if they're going to be sharing that with me in real time. I know they will be collecting data until mid-September, and then the plan is to work on the comprehensive plan through the fall and then have it ready to be presented to you all in December. But as of now, I don't know what the overall feedback has been, because I do not have access to it.
Okay, all right. We're going to be very curious to hear what...
Of course.
Yeah, what people are looking for.
For sure, for sure.
Like maybe more football.
Yeah, for sure.
Oh, I can't imagine why you would say that.
I'm eager to know, too. So I might have to ask for a sneak peek here in a couple weeks.
I think Doug has a question for you also.
Welcome to York County, Ben.
Thank you.
Having been new to the county, what would you see, or what do you see that we should be offering? What's missing? Your experience, what would you bring to York that you're not seeing currently?
That's a great question. I think from what I've seen, having only done Parks and Rec in my career, gone to school for it, I think that there's a need for some type of community center, a space for recreation to take place. You know, we have a senior center. It gets a lot of use, but I would really like to see a space where we can bring people together. Not everyone plays sports. Not everyone plays pickleball. We have great sports facilities. We have great pickleball facilities, but I'd like to see a space where we can bring folks together for community events, meetings, and recreate in that kind of way. So I would be hopeful for some type of facility.
That's good input. Thank you.
Yep, of course.
You've been busy. Thank you very much. I'm glad you've arrived.
Thank you so much.
Have a good day.
Appreciate it.
Okay, now, let's see, we're down to... I got Citizen Comments period. I think I have Pam Pouchot signed up. Pam? Name and address, please. Three minutes.
I've been here 35 years. Can I get an award of 20 minutes to speak?
No.
My name is Pam Pouchot. I reside at 103 Kimberly Court, Yorktown. "The emperor is stark naked, and many are too blind to see it. Trump said, 'What you're seeing and what you're reading is not what's happening.' This is how his lies thrive, ignoring reality and the truth. Trump's excuse for all the violent ICE-Gustavo-like abductions attacking the homeless, addicted, and mentally ill in DC is that he is curbing crime, a ball-faced lie. Majority of the arrests are of people with no criminal record. He is deporting US citizens and those with valid visas. How do you explain the violent takedowns of peaceful people by masked unidentified thugs? Being homeless or sick is now a crime in Trump world. When you lose your job because Trump is on a firing spree, lose health insurance and can't afford the rent as your bills pile up, you can become homeless. The real criminals can be found at 1600 Pennsylvania Avenue. Trump plans to impose martial law on other blue cities while ignoring red states with the highest crime rates. Trump does not believe in the rule of law, only the rule of Trump. He is suppressing the vote of Democrats, removing Hispanics, rewriting history, gutting education, killing science and research, financing pollution, suppressing the media, attacking the arts, crippling Medicaid and SNAP benefits, and promoting bigotry. And this is just the beginning. Trump just repatriated a Venezuelan national, naturalized American citizen who was in a Venezuelan prison for stabbing murder of three peoples. He is now walking free on the streets of Orlando. Ghislaine Maxwell, convicted of child sexual trafficking, sexual assault of minors, and perjury, was moved to a club-fed prison, because even child rapists deserve better living conditions than a maximum-security prison, don't they? Was this her reward for agreeing to lie about Trump's culpability, her willingness to accuse only Democrats of pedophilia, or a possible pardon? Trump has fired inspectors general in most agencies, so there's no one left to address fraud and abuse in government. He is ignoring factual data that he does not like and firing those who speak the truth. Trump has taken bribes and tributes from foreign governments in cash, purchase of his meme coins and cryptocurrency, fast-track real estate deals, and the Qatari plane. Since January, he has increased his net worth by $3 billion. So much for the Emoluments Clause, but then, when did the Constitution mean anything to Trump? Our motto, e pluribus unum, should be replaced with suck-up and pay-up. In the 2020 election, Trump unsuccessfully ordered Georgia to find him 11,780 votes. Now, he is openly rigging the 2026 election by demanding Texas gerrymandering districts to gain five more Republican congressional seats. He will not stop with Texas. So why do so many people continue to worship this convicted felon and sexual assaulter? Well, if you want to succeed or survive in his world, getting down on your knees, swearing fealty, and kissing his glorious posterior is a start. I want to know, is destroying America really worth it? Thank you.
The next person I have is Heather Harmon. Heather, where are you? Okay. Name and address, please. Three minutes.
It might take a bit more.
Madam Chairman and the rest of the Board, I actually live in Jame City County, but I am very delighted that I get to work in York County. And what an incredible night to be here with all the recognition. So my name is Heather Harmon. I am actually here for Mr. Holroyd. He was a wonderful human being. I stand as the Alzheimer's Walk Chairman and also a Board of Director for the Southeastern Chapter of the Alzheimer's Board. Mr. Holroyd stepped up and said, I will raise $500. And I said, then I will smash a pie in your face. So that is what we are here to do. And I will try and do it in five minutes or less, or three minutes or less.
Do we have any cameras?
I had a parent who suffered from dementia, Alzheimer, so it's personal for me. That's why I've stepped forward.
And we appreciate that very much so. Our walk, while he's getting down here, is on October 25. We are 27% of the way to our $260,000 goal this year, so we're pretty excited.
That's a good plug. Okay, you did prove one, okay.
Not my first ready.
Do I get to give the chairman a big hug? Looks like it's a surprise, huh?
What you do after I do this, sir, is all up to me. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Holroyd, I think is going to get a pie in the face?
Yes, ma'am. Go ahead.
It's not a real, it's whipped cream or is it shaving cream?
You may be questioning myself.
Anyway, it's for a good cause, right?
Because he has a little bit of meat in his mouth, I decided just to eat it.
Oh, I hope he enjoys eating it, too. Keep going. Oh, that looks like a good pie. Okay. Cameras ready. One.
Number three.
Two.
Two.
Three. Go!
Don't hesitate now.
Chub it!
Terry Hall just walked in, wondering what's just happened up front.
What a wonderful cause. And you know, we depend so much on our nonprofits to provide for our people. So if you have the opportunity ever, or you should have the opportunity many times, to contribute to the nonprofits, because again, that helps to make the county good and it helps the people who need it. So thank you very much for the work that you do for the Alzheimer's. This is very important. Are you all kind?
Yeah, oh, I'm perfect.
I'm glad you're perfect.
If we get him another 500, I'll come do you.
Okay. Okay, we're down to County Attorney Reports. Mr. Hill, do you have any?
Nothing this evening, ma'am. Thank you.
Okay. Cross that off. County Administrators Reports.
Ms. Noel, thank you. I do have a couple items for you tonight. First of all, I thought we might spend a second and talk about Hurricane Erin. First of all, I thought we might spend a second and talk about Hurricane Erin.
Yes, please.
We are expecting to get a little weather out of this on Wednesday, starting Wednesday night into Thursday, and by Friday, we should be much better off. But we are looking at some high tides, it appears, right now. Last time I checked, probably Thursday afternoon in the five to five-and-a-half-foot range, which is somewhere between moderate and high. So because of that, we have opened the MAC and Chisman to parking for RVs and boats. So some of our folks that have, they're living in some of the lower-lying areas, will have an opportunity to protect their property. What we do ask is, once that happens, is that they have them removed by Saturday at 4:00. Obviously, at the MAC, we have a lot going on there. So it would be very helpful if they could do that for us. So we appreciate that. The second thing I wanted to share with you tonight is, I believe it's fairly common knowledge now that Dr. Shandor has submitted his resignation. And I would personally like to take an opportunity to thank him for everything he's done, all his support for county admin, York County, the things he's done with the schools. He has done a wonderful job, Blue Ribbon Schools, all kinds of academic achievements. He has a lot to be proud of, and we're very pleased.
But they have lives to live their own. And when one door closes, another one opens? Or is it one window and another window? Regardless, Dr. Shandor has done a wonderful, wonderful job for our students. We have an excellent reputation in Virginia for the education that we provide our children. And the county has always been very, very supportive of the schools because we know how important it is to our families and to the teachers and to the parents. And I guess I'm really very sorry that he's not going to stay with us, but I thank him very, very much for all the time that he's spent with us and all that he's been able to accomplish in those years.
Thank you. And I do have one other item. I do need a little guidance from the board.
Uh-oh.
As you may remember, a few meetings ago, we took title to a property right next to Walgreens at the corner of 17 and Goodwin Neck Road.
Yes.
It has been suggested that that might be a good place for a community sign, electric sign, you know, that would, we could broadcast different things like the storm. We could talk about Parks and Rec events that Ben talked about earlier. There are a number of things we could do with that. But I wanted to make sure that I had the whole board's interest in doing that before we proceeded.
It's a good idea. I'd like to see the design.
Sure, we can do that.
Before we move forward with it. But I think it's always good to get information out to people. I just don't, I think we all need to think about it.
A nice, good-looking sign.
Absolutely. We wouldn't do anything less.
Well, you know, the one with the wheels you can pull up there.
I think we were hoping for something a little more permanent.
But like you said, it would be ideal right now to let people know that the MAC is available for their property.
That's a great idea.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Noel.
Board comments? Who would like to go first?
Just to ask a question of Mr. Bellamy first, if I may.
Okay, go for it.
So at the last meeting, we had some discussion about Fenton Mill. Can you give us an update on that?
I believe Mr. Ashworth is here, and I told him to be prepared to talk about that. So he will do that.
Everyone's familiar, I believe, with the situation, so I won't go into that. What we're in right now is week one of a two-week scheduled corrective action for the contractor. So the contractor started this week. Friday, we were going to touch base. Our inspectors will go down there to see, they have certain items that have to be completed this week, and then the rest of them are completed next week. So that's kind of where we are now. There was a, contractors have been cooperative, I will say that, that I've heard from our inspectors. The contractor did work with the citizen on getting some trees down over on Indiana, or out, no, Indiana Road. And that caused a little commotion for Mr. Holroyd, I understand. So I think that was a, hopefully that's the one-time thing, and the contractor understands that that was just for the, they were working with the citizen and the county, trying to get some things done, and that was their best access point. But for the rest of the development, that's not going to be the case. We're looking, going to meet with VDOT about putting some Jersey barriers up at the end of that street to limit that, or to no access from Indiana to Fenton Mill. I think that's all.
So I had two additional questions related to that. What have we done in terms of education of our own team so that we don't get into a situation where we've got that number of violations and have to take draconian action against a developer?
Yeah.
And where are we on the rest of the construction projects within York County? Have we gone out and surveyed those? Are we satisfied that we're on top of the issues in each of those other areas?
Yes, sir.
And that we're not going to see a repeat?
Yes, sir. We are, it's kind of the other side of the shop from where I'm. I've got one half of Public Works and our other deputy director as the other half. But they are in meetings, and I know that they, we have, they have been educated and they know to where we're going from here on out.
Yeah, this is not, not a position the board wants to get itself into.
Yes, sir.
So we really need, we really need for staff to understand the severity and do the job of reporting timely and getting corrections made.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
And Mr. Ashworth, I've got some, discussed with some neighbors too. They're kind of thinking, like Mr. Holroyd is thinking, well, how do we prevent this in the future? What if a development like this comes near where we live? Are we vulnerable to that as well? So it'd be very interesting to hear the corrective action that you guys will be putting in place for that going forward, so.
Yes, sir.
Thanks.
Yeah, and I'd like to say some things about that as well. Yeah, I certainly think that there ought to be some kind of recommendations of a periodic inspection, not a called inspection on a large project like that, especially in the rainy season when there's a lot of rain and self-fences get knocked down and never get put back up, mud gets on roads and stuff like that. That would be a huge concern for me, that we need to stay on top of that, like Mr. Holroyd said. 79 violations is unacceptable, and we shouldn't ever have put ourselves in that position. My understanding is the same contractor is doing the project in lackey. And I have not been able to ride through there, but I understand there are some issues there. So I don't know if you guys have inspected that.
Our inspectors are on top of that and working with, yeah, the same developer. Working with them on that.
All right, very good. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Thank you, Mr. Bellamy.
Thank you, Scott.
Yeah, I just wanted to remind folks that Monday, the 25th, is when school starts. And every year, there's a lot of confusion, not a lot, there is some confusion. The normal travel routes that people have to and from the area get really congested. And down our way on, again, one of my favorite subjects, 17 and Victory Boulevard, and 134 and Victory Boulevard, and Yorktown Road, with all the construction going on, and you put a school and activities, buses, trying to get across the major thoroughfares, and all the parents picking up their kids and all that, it just, it really causes a jam up. One of the things you've got to do is be patient. I think it was last year, a parent got very impatient at a school and decided that he was going to get out of the line and get out of the way from school as fast as he could. In the process of doing that, he snagged the student and drugged the student away down the road, okay? I'm not sure how he stopped, but I can imagine people screaming and hollering, waving their arms, and they finally stopped him, but the student survived with a significant road rash. We do not need the impatience around our children. We have about 13,000 kids that'll be going to school. We got some new bus drivers. Everybody's trying to do the job. We got some new schoolers, if you will, catching the bus for the first time, the first graders, trying to get back and forth. So there's going to be a lot of, there's some confusion. It just always happens. Have some patience because you just, it's not worth having these accidents, okay? So we've got a pretty good record of doing that, and I'd just like for us to continue to do it. So be aware, Monday is when it's going to start. Now, the school will go for about four days, and then they're going to have a four-day break. It started on Friday. So you get a chance to kind of make up for anything you forgot to do during the summer, and then you enjoy yourself. But please be patient out there and be courteous. Give way when it's not necessary to kind of elbow your way up front, okay? That's it. Thank you.
Steven?
Yes, thank you. So I'm going to pivot a little bit because I was so struck by the volunteer hours from Mrs. Owens. I was trying to wrap my head around what that really looks like. So 2,200 hours in 2024. So I did a little bit of quick math, and there are a total of 8,760 hours in a year. And if you figure that, she might need eight hours of sleep on a given night. That takes away 2,900 hours. You live on about 5,840 hours of free time for volunteers, which she invested 2,200 hours. So that came to, I don't know where's my, like 30, almost 38% of her free time went to volunteer hours. That is remarkable. That is a huge impact. And I just applaud her. And I didn't want to leave here tonight without kind of highlighting that because that's a remarkable achievement. And it's not surprising because York County is such a given community, a lot of volunteers here in the community, a lot of people giving back all across the board, you know, working with the folks on the YMC Advisory Board, different youth leagues and so forth. I just see volunteer hours after hours after hour. So it's not surprising, but that's an enormous achievement, and I just kind of wanted to try to frame that up a little bit. So congratulations to her on that.
Thank you very much for doing that.
So sadly to say, I have to beg your indulgence to pay tribute to a very special guy in my life. As you know, last month, we lost my father-in-law, and last Friday, we lost my dad. That one's hard. My father-in-law was like a second dad, but my dad, I always called him my gentle giant. If you ever heard the commercials by E.F. Hutton, "When E.F. Hutton speaks, you listen," and that was always my dad. And he never met a stranger. He cared about everybody. He loved his grandkids, his kids, his great-grandkids. He was at every ballgame, every one of my wrestling matches if he wasn't at work. I had 15 years of working with him at the oil refinery. And he was on swing shift and I was on days. So every chance that we were on shift together, I would, I'd either go see him or he'd come see me. And then when I left the oil refinery, I started my construction business. And he retired, and he goes, "Hey, I need something to do." So he worked for me for 20 years and didn't take a paycheck, wouldn't take a dime. So I gave him a credit card and said, "Keep your truck maintained and keep gas in it." And he would ride from job site to job site and check on all the contractors and make sure they got what they need. It just gave him something to do. He was always a worker, hard, hard, hard worker. I've never known him to be, no one else to be any harder worker than him. But he was truly my hero. He will be missed, but I know he's in a much better place now. He's almost 93 years old. Until about a year ago, he was completely healthy, driving around York County in his blue Dodge pickup, stopping at every place he could stop to talk to somebody because he was a friendly guy, and he was very gentle and very kind and very compassionate, and probably undoubtedly the most honest man I've ever met in my life. So I thank you for that.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I have two topics for the board. As you recall, we had a discussion in our August workshop on resiliency. Last night, the team presenting RAFT, which is resilience-adaption-feasibility tool, held a public meeting at JCC Rec Center. I attended, along with about 18, roughly 18 York County residents and staff. So it was very good turnout for York County. You will recall that York County had established two priorities, namely to adapt the sea-level rise projections and incorporate them into our flood resilience plan, and move the county's FEMA rating from Class 7 to Class 6. And then to additionally align our CIP with preservation actions, including feasibility studies in our existing programs. Purpose of last night was to get public input on what other priorities would you bring forward to the county. And the group came up with, I think, three very good recommendations. It was map and maintain an updated inventory of flood control structures and develop guidance on flood risk and maintenance mitigation strategies. To consider providing additional incentives like expedited permitting for development that incorporate resilient strategies or stormwater credit for property owners who maintain or build eligible natural and nature-based features. And the third was to offer fund matching or tax incentive programs for homeowners and business owners to participate in landscaping-based projects. Thought it was a very good summary of the meeting and three really solid priorities brought forward by the citizens. Second item I had was a lot of discussion with folks, particularly the Queens Lake area, on the Hubbard-Penniman intersection issues around McGruder. Lieutenant Radcliffe is back there at the back, and he's come up with a recommendation that we revert back to the way the street signs used to be at Penniman and Hubbard with a straight-through on Penniman and a stop sign on Hubbard, but that we add one deputy at that corner to assist during the drop-off and pickup timing. That recommendation has been forwarded to Dr. Shandor and Dr. Carroll, and they will evaluate and get back to us. But I think that's a reasonable approach that probably improves the traffic at that corner. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'm going to talk about the Economic Development Authority. Doug and I, with some staff, met with the chairman and vice chairman of the authority the other day, and we've decided that we need more communication. We always talk about communication, don't we, in the county? But at any rate, we're going to get together at least quarterly to see what they're doing and how we can help them. But the county administrator, Mr. Bellamy, came up with a list that I'd like to share a little bit with you all. And I think it's really significant because oftentimes you hear comments, "Oh, the county's not doing anything, economic development is, you know, not doing anything at all." And what are those people doing? Remember Beals and everything like that? But let me tell you, they do an awful lot. And I will start with FY '24. In FY '24, over $68,000 were given in grants. And because of that, the county received about 64,500, $464,000 worth of private investment in the county. So that's a plus. Then when you go to FY '25, the EDA awarded 45 grants, which were over $763,000, and it leveraged up to $13,820,432 in private investment in York County businesses. And that's what it's all about. So what I really want you all to know about is that quiet work is always being done, looking for more and more businesses in the county. And it looks, after reading these figures, it looks like that our EDA and our Economic Development Authority people have really done a darn pretty good job for the county. So don't always believe everything that you read on social media. Lots of grants, 23 grants, which were the $80,000. I mean, you look at all that they've done, and they're continually looking at new things. Some of the grants they gave to improve the look of the businesses, some of them were e-commerce grants so that they could support new website development, which you wouldn't see, but it would help the business. There's a lot of things that aren't visible that are very important to moving economic development forward in the county. So take with a grain of salt what you hear some of the naysayers in the county talk about. And I think that's a very good thing. And I look at what we've done with the volunteers and that, look at the investment of personal capital into making this what a marvelous county that it is. And those of you who... And you could, those of you who volunteer or those of you who work in various fields to improve the county can be very proud of the work that you do, because we're very proud of the work that you do. But we're the big heads, we're the talking heads. You are the ones in the fields, you are the ones who are doing the work. And I can't tell you how important what you do, each and every one of you, to make this county what it is today. So with that, we're going to take a quick break. Five minutes.
Some pieces outlining what we've proposed and what went behind it. And you'll forgive me, I have a little bit of a cold, so you might hear a bit of a sniff there occasionally, so thank you for your patience. Talk a little bit about what happened with the Planning Commission and what that process was. We're going to talk about, again, recreation requirements for plan developments, background in what we're proposing. Then we're going to go into the changes for open space cluster developments and the performance standards. Break down, again, the background of, you know, what is a cluster subdivision? Talk about some of the staff analysis that went into actually resulting in the proposed amendments. And then we're going to do a little wrap up with a conclusion and a recommendation. So first draft of these revisions went to the Planning Commission at a February 12th work session. They looked at what we had and gave us a lot of really good feedback. So we took that and over the next couple of months, we synthesized it, incorporated it into a final version, which we presented to the Planning Commission at public hearing last month. They voted four zero with one abstaining to recommend approval of those amendments. So I'm going to talk a little bit first about, again, the recreation requirements for plan developments. These live in section 24-1, 361, and 361.1 in the zoning ordinance. So would probably be helpful for you all, you have your draft ordinance there. If you want to go ahead and open that up, we're going to go to the second page, start here, and if you just want to follow along as I talk about some of our proposed changes. So for the benefit of those who are at the meeting tonight, I want to just give a little overview of what are plan developments. So we have two types of those in the county. We have Plan Development Residential, which is commonly abbreviated as PDR, and Mixed Use Plan Development, which is commonly abbreviated as PDMU. All plan developments require approval by the Board of Supervisors. They're always considered by the Planning Commission, they're always approved by the Board. What this is, is so there, it's a district that you essentially rezone into. The developer writes an ordinance that's specific to that plan development. However, while each PD has its own unique ordinance, they have to follow certain requirements that are in the zoning ordinance, and all of them have to follow those specific requirements. So tonight, we're going to be talking about those open space and recreation requirements specifically. So I'll start off with PDR, Residential Plan Development. So we looked at, okay, what are the open space requirements right now? What are the recreation requirements and some of the other pieces that go into that? Twenty-five percent of land area of a PDR has to be conserved open space. We're not changing that. We are increasing the required recreational area from 10% to 15% of the land area of the development. You'll see there in E1 that we also included some clarifying language. So land features such as wetlands, steep slopes, large utility easements can be part of preserved open space, but we added clarifying language in E2 that cannot be part of a recreational area. You cannot recreate in wetlands, can't recreate in steep slopes. We wanted to make that clear. Again, this can be part of an open space that you're preserving, but we don't want that to be counted as recreational area.
Can you take a quick moment and share what recreational area is in terms of what the ordinance is?
Yeah, absolutely. So what we're calling recreational areas, again, these are things that are going to contain your recreational facilities and amenities. These are where your trails are going to be, if you have other, like, again, and we talk, I'll talk about this a little more, but there's like certain required facilities. Currently, we have things like pools, and I'll get into that in the future. But again, the recreation area is like, okay, that's where I'm doing my active recreation. And then the open spaces, again, those preserved areas that are the larger of the whole.
But my understanding is that you can have, use your open space as recreational?
Yes, the recreation area is part of the open space.
Okay, so can you have a recreational building on an open space? Tennis court?
Yes.
Swimming pool? Anything else?
There's a number of facilities, and I actually, I'm getting a little ahead of myself. One of the things we looked at is because you're right, we had these like required facilities. And we're, what we kind of looked at is, we're going to look at changing that up a little bit. And so if you want to give me a few sides, I'm going to dig into that.
The only reason I bring it up is because a lot of times, and I've seen this over the years, supervisors get confused when you talk about open space, you expect it to be open and nothing in it. And sometimes what we end up in open space, we see drainage basins. I mean, I'm talking, go back to Sugarberry in Running Man, that was open space. And then people are going, wait a minute, you're cutting out all the trees. Open space doesn't necessarily, could it have trees in it? So we get a lot of confusion with our citizens and supervisors when you talk about open space, and then you get down to now this thing called recreational space, you know, how it differs. I think it's sort of what you're kind of getting to.
Because I wanted you to help clarify to everybody what recreational space means. Because some people, that may mean a ball field, other people, that may mean a tennis court or a walking trail. So per the ordinance, what is a recreational space? So that as we talk about this, everybody can frame up the conversation based on what the ordinance calls recreational space.
So to put it in my mind, though, is recreational space open space?
Yes.
It's part of the?
Yes. Okay, so it can count as part of the developer's open space requirements?
It's part of their, like, larger calculation for their open space.
I'm not making this difficult, I'm just saying
Yeah.
That there is a, where you come in, build a development, we require a certain amount of open space.
Yes.
Okay? And in that open space, you find these various things, like recreational space, wetlands, stuff like that.
But you could have a clubhouse. You could have a clubhouse
Yes.
in the open space.
Could be, that would be an amenity.
Yeah. Clubhouse, recreation.
I think, if I might offer, that's part of the reason we add this word preserved and conserved to the open space definition, is we want to make it clear that, again, your open space isn't something that should be entirely developed and pulling from developed areas to say, okay, that's my open space. We want to have conserved natural areas as part of the larger open space, which is why we wanted to add some of that clarifying language in there.
So in this, you're going to have some requirement with no buildings?
Mm-hmm.
That's going to be specified in our ordinance?
Mm-hmm.
A percentage, probably.
Common open space.
Okay. What?
I'm sorry, I was saying common open space.
Okay, a common open space as opposed to just open space?
Well, when I say common open space, because opens, these open spaces are always in common area because they have to be maintained and preserved by an HOA. So that's what I say when I use that term. They're the same thing.
Okay, be careful with your terms, please.
Okay.
Because I mean, any subtlety in your term can mean, could mean something different. If a builder, a builder gives a, has a space and decides to give part of it to a land conservancy, okay, that meets his requirements for open, for his open space of the, of the development. But that space cannot be necessarily used for anything with that, because now it's actually under controlled by another entity. So this gets a little complicated here.
You're correct, absolutely.
Except for the fact the ordinance as drafted says at least 15% of that open space has to be recreational space. So even if they give it to a conservatory, still 15% of it has to go to recreational purposes. So however they work out of that agreement.
Of the total, the total space.
Of the total open space, right.
Okay. All right, that was just my little graphic of a utility easement, and you don't want that to be recreation space. I'm going to hop down here to EB. So there's a requirement that your recreation areas need to be accessed by pedestrian and bike paths. You need to be able to go from your house and access the recreation area. The term that's used, though, is good ingressment easement. Good is a subjective term, especially for code. What does that mean? And so we clarify that to say safe and level. Path needs to be safe, needs to be level, can't be super steep and not accessible. I'm going to skip down a little bit to E. We're looking at a new standard that's been added, and this is about stormwater ponds or BMPs. So this is a photo of a BMP that is functioning for its purpose. It's handling stormwater runoff and it's managing water quantity and quality. In and of itself, though, not necessarily a recreational feature or amenity. So we made a clarification that you're going to have a stormwater pond, and I, developer, then say, this is one of my recreational amenities, and part of my recreational spaces needs to actually have recreational components. So this is a good example photo, you know, there's a water feature, there's a bridge, there's a path, it's actually an amenity. The virtue of it being a pond in and of itself does not equate it to be a recreational amenity. So we just wanted to make that clarification.
So what is the, so what is the recreational amenity? The walking path?
Mm-hmm, and if you read the text of it, we say it's not, you know, solely retention or basin-like in design. So the language of what we written is, again, you have like landscaping around it, you have low fencing, you make it inviting for the user to come and interact with it and actually do a recreational activity, as opposed to it is strictly a stormwater pond that doesn't lend itself to that use.
So you can put this in, you can put this in an ordinance, but I guarantee you, the average Joe is not going to understand what you just said. I mean, you talk about a recreational, I don't know, the board members, to me, recreational space is where you can get out and hit balls, throw frisbees, run with your dog, you know, do all kinds of stuff. I mean, that's, that's the kind of sense, but in the end, but from the, from the developer's perspective, you know, he's looking to maximize the space and make it appealing, but we've got to meet these, these specifics. Like, I could see the bridge across this pond, does that make the whole pond a recreational space?
I think this, this, you know, if a developer would come and say, I have a stormwater pond that I want to claim as a recreational component, we would look at the sum of the whole of what's being proposed there in totality. So with, you know, I mean, this is just an example picture. I think it would depend on case by case, what they presented to staff and what they were saying. Here's what make, again, in the context of the development we're proposing and our recreational components, this is how we're making this a recreational component as opposed to, I need to meet my recreation space requirement. So, okay, I'm going to take, call the area around my pond, my stormwater pond that I have to have recreation just to meet that requirement. That's the situation we're trying to prevent. We want it to be intentional if you're going to call that recreation space.
And you probably need to do more than just throw a fountain in there and call it recreational. Staff will
Yeah.
Be a little bit more rigorous in that evaluation.
Exactly, yeah.
I don't know of any development, I mean, you probably, maybe the supervisors know one, I don't know of a BMP that was just built for the hell of it. Normally, the land is going to be used
Yeah.
for something, or, but, or it has a lot to do with stormwater flow,
Drainage.
Continue the flow of previous, you know, existing streams and whatnot.
Yes.
And it meets the TMDL, helps build, meet the TMDL standards. So it just, I can see where this gets a little confusing.
Okay.
Okay, so in the end, I don't see a BMP as a recreational amenity.
Required. Okay.
I mean, I don't see it as such. I see it as a pond doing, it may be do double duty, but you, we just made to make sure it's really clear
Mm-hmm.
how it's, how a pond plays into the recreational requirements.
No, you're completely right. And I think that's the goal of what we're doing here, is making that clarification that you're talking about, that, again, a pond by itself is an amenity? Probably not.
You just have to pass the red face test of the residents of that plan development. If you tell them that's a recreational area, if they go, yeah, I can see that, or if they go, it's just a steel pond, nobody does anything with it, it's, everybody's got to be able to pass that red face test as, if you're going to call it a recreational area, it's got to look like a recreational area, even if it's just a meeting place with some benches and a path, that works too. But, again, pass that test.
Yes.
And a BMP is part of the open space, right?
They can be.
Yes.
Okay. So I'm going to hop down a little bit to section, I'm sorry.
If it was a large enough lake like that one was, and you offered kayaking or something like that, then you could make a case that at least a portion of it is recreational.
Well, you got, that's a very interesting point, because some of these ponds are not bigger, they're not as big as this room, and yet put people, I found people with boats in, in the pond, okay?
They go fishing in the pond, too.
Or the, some homeowner association will adapt later near a drainage outflow, they will put an area like a park, maybe the developer will have left off a couple of lots that will turn into a park, but they go fish in the pond. But they're not allowed access to any else, any other access around, around the pond. So there's, there's all different ways of playing this game. I mean.
Continue, please.
Let me move down to section F. Right now, for PDRs or residential plan developments, there's prescriptive required recreational facilities, such as large pools, tennis courts, and playfields. What we've heard, especially from the older PDRs from the late 90s, early 2000s, is that some of the HOAs have communicated to us, we have this massive pool that nobody uses, or we have a tennis court that nobody uses, and now we're paying these maintenance costs. So this kind of led us to revisit and say, instead of having prescriptive requirements, maybe we can do something different, because different developments have different contextual needs depending on what's being proposed. Because, again, these have to go to Planning Commission, they have to go to the Board, they're reviewed by staff. So we want to get the best product and development that we can get here in the county. And so what we have pivoted and proposed here are proposed facility categories. There's three kinds. Active recreation, and we have in the ordinance text suggestions for what constitutes that. These are things, again, you actively recreate that, playgrounds, ball fields. Required passive recreation, these are things like gardens, or maybe you have a gazebo that oversets a lake, and you sit on that and view that. Again, passive recreation, both of these are required. And then walkways and trails throughout the development to access all the recreation components. Someone has to leave their dwelling unit and be able to access the recreation safely. And the walkways and trails themselves should be an actual recreational component as well. Again, we're taking, taking the approach of, we're not having prescriptive requirements, and again, we're proposing, you have, again, you have to have these categories. You can't just put in a field and say, yep, that's my recreation and call it a day. You need to have active, you need to have passive, incorporate those walkways and trails, have that on your concept plan. But again, we have these broader categories to allow for more flexibility in what's actually developed.
Do we have a requirement for, where they're located in a, in a complex?
Generally, they need to, I mean, generally, when we're looking at a master plan, they need to be sent, you know, generally, they're centrally located, you know, trails obviously can be on the periphery, but if you're having like a playground, for example, you want that to be somewhat central because everybody in the development needs to access it. And so those are the things we look at. We don't prescriptively require that you have to put it right in the middle, but that's the place that logically makes the most sense.
Well, we have neighborhood, we have neighborhoods down in my district, they have playgrounds that are never used because they're in the wrong place. They're not, they're centrally located in the wrong place. They have to cross, either cross kind of busy streets to get to them, or they're in a place where there's no shade or such like that, or just you don't feel safe. So that's why I'm kind of wondering if we are stipulating, so this is a lesson learned that we can apply to these playgrounds, because you're going to spend $90,000 to $100,000 on equipment to put it in there, you know, it's got to be more than just show.
Mm-hmm.
Because they have to maintain it.
Yes. I'm going to move down a little bit, just for reference, I'm on page four, looking at number three. No more mulch paths. If you're going to have a path that accesses recreation area, at a minimum, if it's a pedestrian walkway, it needs to be stone dust. If it's a multi-use trail, it's got to be paved. Mulch paths, whenever it rains, they wash away. Just experience has proven, they don't function. And so we're making that abundantly clear here. That's not an option.
What about the foundation for these kind of roads?
For asphalt?
The foundation underneath it?
Well, they have to have an all-weather surface foundation, too, underneath.
That's specified in the, in the code?
That would be part of the cross-section that we would look at when it's submitted, when they submit the cross-section for, for just by way of example, stone dust, we want to see, okay, is there, you know, your edging needs to be durable, so like steel or some kind of plastic that's going to contain your fill gravel. And then we're looking at the layers, again, your base layer needs to be something that's, as it stacks up, durable.
So Caitlin,
Yes.
let me ask you a question.
Mm-hmm.
I know you're going through this specific, but I think if you told us why you're doing what you're doing, this is the problems that we're having, this is the problems that we're seeing, and that's why we're changing, I think it might help some clarification.
Okay.
Like, hey, these are problems, just like the walkways, you just explained that, but not necessarily some of the other stuff. I think it would be great if you, if you could interject some of the issues that you're seeing coming forward in the county. You guys are trying to circumvent disasters down the road. Just my, my suggestion.
Okay, yeah, absolutely. As I kind of alluded to earlier with, again, the prescriptive facilities, a lot of that comes from communication from HOAs. And again, they have these facilities that are costly to maintain, or they could be less used. And that's why we pivoted toward this more flexible, again, we're going to give you these broad categories, we want you to have these facilities, but depending on the kind of development it is and what's actually being proposed, you have some flexibility with the categories you're proposing that are appropriate for the size of, you know, whether it's 20 homes or it's 100. Again, it's dependent on what's actually being proposed and what's the best thing for that development. So we're not having these issues that we've heard from the HOAs particularly.
And I like that approach, because it gives the developer an opportunity to read the market and figure out what is going to be the best amenity they can add there to attract buyers to that, that community, as opposed to saying, you have to have a pool, you have to have a tennis court. So I like that approach.
We added some clarific, oh, I'm sorry. Okay, okay. We added some clarifications, this is on page five. You'll see something there about on-street parking, and that's been a problem. And so we know the developments with Chris Mill, for example, that have these issues. And so what we've clarified there is, you can't use on-street parking to supplement your required off-street parking. And if you're going to propose surplus on-street parking, your street must meet the VDOT standard minimum and be wide enough to accommodate that. So, you know, we're not doing a 20-foot road and saying we're going to park on it, that's not going to be acceptable. And so, again, we're just making that clear in this language.
What about parking on the sidewalk? I mean, remember the image?
No.
Well, I know, that's what I'm saying, though, we, that's one of the, the issues we saw in that presentation that was a while back, where people had no place to park, so they tried to go up to the, you know, they got one car in the parking, in the driveway, and then they put another one in, which then makes the sidewalk unusable, because you have to walk in the street. How are we addressing that here?
We changed that code, didn't we?
You did, yeah, and this might, this is why we're changing them.
So I'm just saying, how's it being addressed?
Okay, so this will function in tandem to what you considered last month with the parking. So part of that problem was because the garage was getting counted as a space, and the driveway wasn't long enough to accommodate two vehicles. That was changed, so you're going to have to have that longer driveway. Sidewalks need to be accessible. This is really saying, again, you know, clarifying, you can't have on-street parking as supplement for your required off-street. It's, it's kind of redundant to a case, but we're just making it clear in this language as well. Because we've seen the problems. We also added a clarification, you have to have sidewalks on both sides of the street. This is a photo of a development where we see the sidewalk is not on the side of the street where the homes are, so the access is, they have to cross the street. So again, we're really just reiterating, you have to have sidewalks on both sides of your road, so your residents can access and have safe egress and ingress. So at the very end of PDR, what I'm talking about in context of what we're amending, there's existing affordable housing incentives. I'll be frank, they're not used very often. I have not seen this been used in my time with the county, but the current provisions allow for reduction or request to eliminate open space in the context of I, developer, I'm doing this affordable housing project. Staff felt that this wasn't really appropriate, the elimination of open space was not appropriate. Even affordable housing development should have a component of open space and recreational space. So we kept the ability to request a reduction, we removed the ability to request elimination of open space. And then that kind of flowed down to, for example, if you had lots that were over 7,500 square feet in size, you could eliminate your recreation space, that's, we didn't feel that was appropriate, so we struck that. So really, we're preserving some of this by saying you can reduce a request reduction in recre, or, excuse me, open space, you can't get rid of it completely. This is just a photo of an affordable housing development in Norfolk with open space. You can have open space and affordable housing, it works.
Is that a request of the Board or a special use permit, or?
This would be part of a plan development that were to come before you, if they wanted to utilize these affordable housing incentive provisions, that would be part of the requests that they take to you with the development.
Seeing that picture, first thing keen on mine, having served on the Wetlands Board, was the impervious surface. So do we put any emphasis on having a pervious surface?
Impervious surface. It's expensive.
That's impervious there, because it's just solid concrete.
It is. I mean, this is just an example picture, this is Broad Creek in Norfolk. It was just my, kind of an example of saying, you know, from a developer's side, you can have an affordable housing development and still have common open space for your residents. So.
Port Warwick's the same, I mean, it looks similar to that. The open space in the middle with the sidewalks and parking around.
But does our ordinance speak to how much of that, I guess, recreational space is non-porous?
So for your preserved open space, that really truly needs to be a preserved open space. I think what ties into your recreation area, again, if you're going to have like all-weather trails, for example, and this would tie into probably like what goes into your stormwater and the drainage on site. And so if they're, you know, if it works through their stormwater to do a porous surface as you suggested, maybe that's an option they would use. But again, the idea of like, you know, your, your open space, that's not recreation, yet it needs to be truly preserved open space that you're not developing.
That I, just what you just said just confused the hell on me. You're going to preserve real open space? Well, you can put a, you can put a club in there, that's, that's impervious. I mean, you kind of, Caitlin, you're just kind of mushing stuff together here. So, I mean, I, I don't even know what you said, to be honest with you. You got to go back and address what you just said. The...
So for open space, it's green area.
Mm-hmm.
It's, or it's environmental areas, again, we're preserving in the development. And a component of that is recreational space.
So 25% of the development needs to be open space, right? Up at least 15% of that, per the changes recommended, needs to be recreational space. Some of that can be green, some of that could be a blacktop surface for a, a tennis court or a clubhouse. Can you have all 25% be recreational space?
And I think, I don't think we, a developer would come to us with that proposal because of cost.
Understood, I'm just trying to understand.
They're not giving up 25% of their land.
Well, they're giving up 25% as open space, but, you know, would they develop that, you know, build big ball fields and the entire open space be recreational space? Because ordinance says at least 15%, which means it could be all the, the entire 25%.
I think, yeah, I think if a proposal like that were to come to staff, we would tell the developer we have concerns with this.
Okay. But back to Mr. Shepherd's, I think, question, of the 15-plus percent, is there anything that speaks to, you can't pave it all over? It can't all be non-pervious? Or does the ordinance speak to that?
Do you want to?
I think that's what.
I'm just trying to understand, the terminology keeps going, leaping back and forth.
I think that the question you're trying to get at, Mr. Shepherd, is stormwater regulations still applied? Yes. I mean, they still have to meet their stormwater requirements. The recreation component could be a part of that, like they have a BMP or fields or things like that. But the stormwater requirements are not changing with the plan development changes. They still have to meet stormwater requirements, no matter what. So, you know, these are, those are two separate...
I'm thinking, I'm thinking of the environmental aspects. I don't know the cost of bricks versus asphalt. I would imagine bricks probably more expensive because of the labor, but gravel, though, is cheaper than, than, than concrete, and it's pervious. Okay? And so we have this requirement overall, over the county, because we're now getting down to the, the part where it's going to get expensive for us if we don't qualify to meet all the TMDL requirements. And I'm just looking at future developments that provide some, some, we get credit for it, this could be recreational space, open space, but anytime we go, you just, you talk to people about open space, they think it's going to be open. Okay? Could be trees in it, but it's going to be open. But for us, it's not.
And that's correct. I mean, the definition that you're saying is correct. It's not always, it could be a wooded area, it could be forested, it could be steep slope, ravines, things of that nature.
Could be a lot of stuff. Okay, I just want to, it's one of, what I'm, reason I'm asking these questions, because over the years, decades, we've, these are the kind of things I've seen that come to because over the years, decades, we've, these are the kind of things I've seen that come to be a problem. In fact, until the last five, six years, they've become even more of a problem. I remember Doug talking about the parking and street management and all this kind of stuff. Well, this is what's happened, is we got fewer spaces, we got people cramming more stuff in it and coming back with problems, that are real problems that we need to address, that we're trying to address here.
Right, exactly.
And I appreciate what you're doing. I really do. It's just, I gotta understand that, how you're, how you, when you go, you go from open space to recreational space, and then, open space can have buildings and BMPs and stuff in it, and recreational space has gotta be, I guess, you recreate somehow in there. It could be all, any manner, and how that's gonna look with the future development. Because in, what happens in the end, what happens in the end? Developer shows up, 200 acres, 150 acres, whatever, and they gotta present a picture based upon the requirements of the county, and then, all hell breaks loose because it, because the neighbors don't like what's gonna happen.
Right, and that's what we, that's what we're trying to address with these changes, is, as Mr. Drury said, we have history, we have things that have happened in the past that we've noticed their problems with, so we wanna make sure we're addressing those changes. So, the changes we are bringing forward to unite are basically things that we have seen problems with in previous developments. And so, even though the ordinance isn't, you know, changing a huge amount, we are making those minor changes to try to clarify. I mean, open space has been in the ordinance for decades.
Forever.
And recreation has always been a part of open space. We're just increasing the requirement that they have more recreation space and that it actually be recreation space and spaces that they can use. So, like Arbordale, a lot of you are familiar with Arbordale. When they came forward, you know, the ordinance says right now, they're required to put tennis courts in and pools. And you, as the board, made the decision, because the developer said, nobody that lives in our community wants to play tennis or have an Olympic-sized pool that they have to maintain. They want a pool that they can wade in and just float around in, and they want a pickleball court or a dog park or trails or something like that. And so, you, as the board, allowed them to make those changes to their planned development when Arbordale went in. And there's multiple of these developments that you all have approved that have those changes, where they're required to either have an Olympic-sized pool, according to the ordinance. But, you said, well, yeah, we understand that's not something you wanna put in. And so, we're just kind of memorializing a lot of that in here by giving the developer a little bit more flexibility when it comes to those things.
So, Earl, is there any specificity in the ordinance of open space? Is it clear what can be put in open space? Trees, shrubs, sidewalks?
Yeah, so, open space, well, excuse me.
I think that's what Tom's getting confused about, probably, because you got open space, but there's other things you can do in the open space. So, I think we need clarity on exactly what can be in open space and what can be in the open space.
Okay. I'm gonna read the text of what's in E1, because I think that might address some of the questions.
Okay.
And I'm just, I'm just gonna read it as it's written, okay? And including the changes we proposed. So, 25% of the total gross land area of any PDR development shall be conserved as open space, which shall be preserved and maintained for use by those who live or work within the development or other persons or groups, as the POA, Property Owners Association, may allow. And then, there's the addition we made that land areas containing 30% slopes, non-titled wetlands, existing proposed utility easements, or stormwater management ponds may be counted towards the open space. I don't think we have a prescriptive, you have to have it be wooded, because not all are, and it's, maybe they're developing on something that was farmed.
Well, no, I'm not asking that. I'm asking what people can come to the county and say, what can I put in the open space? Can I put trees? Can I put sidewalks? Can I put? You're saying they have this open space, and then, it has to be, you know, 30% greater natural occurring slopes. But, again, I think clarity on that of what is allowed in an open space and what is not allowed in an open space. I would think that would make some clarity, in my opinion.
Maybe what is not allowed, and let them make their mind up what they want.
Again, I think developers need to know what they can. If nothing else, at least what's prohibited.
Right.
Yes.
That's all, that's all I think you need, is what's prohibited, and then, they make the choice.
Yeah, I'm okay with that.
Well, it goes back to my very first question, what does the ordinance consider recreational space? So, just, I think just the definition at the beginning of this is to say, open space means the following. Could be trees, could be whatever.
I do wanna know-
Recreational space means the following, and then, everything else follows behind that. So, everybody know, okay, this, when the county says open space, this is what they're, what they mean. It doesn't necessarily mean it's open.
There's no ambiguity to that.
Right, so-
Well, one of the things you just read, was that open space or was that just recreational space?
That was for open space, sir.
Open space. You said in there that they can use. Is that the word, that's the word in there, right? They can use. Well, if we restrict them to certain things, that's just open space, okay? So, does that connect, if they're gonna use it, can, how is that gonna be, that use is, can be recreational? And it, I mean, the whole thing could be used as recreational.
I mean, they specify-
It's still open space.
They specify that it can be-
Well, I'm saying to use means you got to be able to do, you gotta do something with it.
But, they specify, stormwater management ponds or basins can be counted towards open space. So, again, what can be counted towards open space, that's my question.
Yeah, I apologize for interrupting. I do wanna note, we, this isn't in this section of the ordinance, farther down, and this is actually in the performance standards section. At almost the end of that section, we do define open space in there.
Okay.
Because there's open space in other areas, like cluster development, for example. So, there's a common definition in that section. I don't have it on hand, but we do have a definition there.
At least we have that that we can refer to. Okay, thank you.
All right, if we're all comfortable. You can hover, okay.
Caitlin, I wanted to come back to one other-
Caitlin, thank you. Do you have something?
That's okay, yeah.
One other comment earlier, and it was on impervious surface. The Hampton Roads TPO building and what they've done to make that entire parking lot and all the sidewalks pervious.
Yeah.
So, that they absorb water. I think we should capture that idea in here somewhere, because that's, that's missing right now in our ordinances. But, I think it's a great idea.
No, I agree with that, unfortunately. The cost for pervious- driveways or pervious parking lots or whatever is more expensive for the developer than the other. And I think we'd all like to have pervious, but there's a cost consequence.
But, you incentivize them through, but thinking about their costs.
And the question, that's a very good question. How would you incentivize them to spend more money to give you that pervious service?
I will say, there are stormwater incentives. And that's where we, where we've seen it utilized in other developments. And these are even like for byright developments, where we've seen like pervious pavers put down, because there's a stormwater benefit. And they can get credits.
Good.
It's part of Raft. It's part of Raft.
And that's, yep, that's something, exactly.
Right.
All right, I'm gonna move on to PDMU. This, not a lot of changes in this section. 10% of land area and a mixed-use plan development is for open space. We're not changing that. There's a requirement for a central green area. We're not changing that. Really, we're only proposing two changes. We're making a clarification that to different components of a mixed-use development, so the residential component to the commercial component, you have to have walkway connectivity. Somebody living there needs to be able to walk safely and in a logical fashion from the pedestrian element to the commercial element. So, there's my little animation. Nelson's Grant, he's walking.
That's a big guy.
Was that litter on those picture?
Last one here is for apartments. Mixed-use developments do sometimes have apartments, multifamily dwellings proposed. Those are still subject to the performance standards for apartments in a different section of the ordinance 404. So, for example, you have to have a 25-foot landscape yard around an apartment building. We're capturing that in this ordinance, so when the developer goes to build their concept plan for preparation, if they're gonna have apartments, they know that, hey, I need to make sure I'm capturing those standards and incorporating them into my concept plan. This largely comes from, we've had past developments where that wasn't captured, and when it got to the site plan stage, things had to get rearranged. So, we're just, again, this really is a, also a reminder to the developer, you have these other performance standards. If you have apartments, they've gotta meet those. Something to be aware of.
So, Caitlin, in our, in our requirements, you talk about walking, okay? It always seems to me that we require walking on, you know, sidewalks on both sides of the road or street, and then, around apartments. But, do we ever, do we ever ask ourselves, normally use these things, you gotta have, you gotta be going somewhere. You know, a sidewalk to nowhere, that's one of my biggest concerns, that this board would spend money on a sidewalk that goes nowhere, okay? And I'm just wondering if we ever give that any thought to in our planning?
Give me an example for, do you have an example of where you have that, a sidewalk that goes nowhere?
Well, I've seen for a long time, for a long time on Hampton Highway, the federal government got out ahead of us, or VDOT, and VDOT got a lot of money, and they built a sidewalk.
Well, that was, that was, yes.
Yeah, that, that is a, that might go to a storage facility. But, who's gonna walk to a storage facility? Normally, you store things, you drive a car down there. I mean, rarely, and I hardly ever see anybody on that sidewalk. Maybe one or two people. But, when we built the sidewalk between Edge Wood and Woodlake Crossing that had a church in the middle of it and YMCA across the street, and we had to cross, like, man, oh, man. I mean, I'm getting, still to this day, I'm still getting emails, people going this, and they got pictures. Somebody just sent me a picture the other day. And it was this sidewalk, and it's how wonderful it is, because people use it. So, it's an, it's an expense that we have on, that we demand this stuff.
It's also recreational amenity.
Well, how many, well, that goes to my point about how many people, you build something, is it just there for pictures, or is it there to be actually used? Because it's an expense.
So, this is really, I'm speaking to this in the context of a mixed-use development. Mixed-use development has to have walkability. That's kind of the tenet of the style of development, which is why we require you have, need to have pedestrian connection between the commercial and the residential element. That's an integral part of a mixed-use development. So, if we see a proposal come before us, that needs to be incorporated in there, in that master plan.
So, Caitlin, are you finished with that section?
I am.
So, can we go over section, paragraph A? You're taking the acreage down from 10 to 5.
I am about to get into that, sir, in my next slides.
Okay, go right ahead.
So, I will, I get very detailed, so.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Okay. So, I'm gonna pivot a little bit here. We're gonna transition to the performance standards for cluster development. I'm gonna explain again, what is that? What are we changing? What was the impetus behind those proposed changes? So, for the benefit of those at the meeting, I wanna define and explain what exactly a cluster subdivision is and how it's different than a conventional subdivision. So, a conventional subdivision, as the name kind of implies, is when you have a parent tract of land, it gets subdivided into lots. When it gets subdivided, the lots have to be the minimum size that's required in the zoning district, the minimum width, and be on a public road. So, by way of example, if I have a large tract of land that's zoned rural residential, if I wanna subdivide each lot, I create needs to be one acre of developable area. It has to be 150 feet wide. It has to be on a public street. This is an example, this is a conventional subdivision, Barham Trace. You can see there, it was subdivided into seven lots. It's kind of an infill parcel that got divided, so that's just kind of an example to show you what that looks like. When the county had larger tracts of just land, this was really back in the 90s and 80s and maybe into the early 2000s, you saw larger conventional subdivisions. We don't see that as much anymore. By virtue of, there's less large tracts of land available. A lot of conventional subdivision that comes into Planning and Development Services now is smaller subdivisions of five or six acres, or even less than that, two or three house lots. Okay, so, we know what conventional subdivision is, so what is cluster subdivision? The name kind of implies these are clustered residential lots. The lots don't have a minimum width or size, but the trade-off for that is you have a large tract of preserved open space. They're byright, so both conventional subdivision and cluster subdivision is permitted byright in single-family residential zoning districts. And I wanna really reiterate, between conventional and cluster subdivision, the underlying density of the zoning district is altered. You're not getting more houses in a cluster development than you would subdividing conventionally. So, what you see in the performance standards is actually a little formula for a developer to use. Because they think, okay, well, I wanna do a cluster subdivision. How many lots do I get? How do I calculate that? So, this is the formula that they use. They take their net developable acreage, divide that by a reduction factor, and what that is, is accounting for the fact you have to build roads in your development. You can't build houses on them. Multiply that, and then, you divide it by whatever the lot size is of the zoning district that you're in. And those reduction factors vary for RC, because that's less dense. That's the least dense district, so you're gonna have a higher reduction factor than R13, which is more dense and a lower reduction factor. I think this is easier explained if you actually see an example of what it's used. So, in my little example, I have a magical perfectly rectangular parcel. This doesn't happen in real life, but by way of example, we'll pretend. 12-acre tract, it's zoned R13. The minimum lot size for R13 is 13,500 square feet, or a third of an acre. So, if I were to conventionally subdivide my perfectly square parcel, accounting for the fact that I have, could get about 32 lots, perhaps. Each of those would be 90 feet wide, which is the district minimum. It's accounting for the fact that, okay, I'd have to build two 50-foot ride rightaways with roads. Now, if I were doing the raw math, I would get 38 lots. That probably wouldn't happen, because, again, you have to build roads and things like that to get lots. If I were calculating this using the cluster subdivision formula, I would multiply my 12 acres by the reduction factor of 0.8, divide it by the district minimum size. That gives me a maximum of 31 lots, accounting for roads. So, these are things that, again, kind of a way of example of showing that with cluster and conventional subdivision, you're getting the same number of lots. Getting in cluster, they're smushed together, and you have open space.
So, what happens when the developer comes to the board supervisors and asks for a variation and adds, you know, 15, 20 more houses? And they've done that. We've seen it.
That would be a rezoning, sir.
We just said no.
Yeah, or a plan development. If they're developing-
Well, you talk about a minimum, and we've, Smith Farms is one of the bigger, more expensive subdivisions. And we added, you know, it was a, I think it was rural residential, which is one acre, right?
And he resoned.
Yeah, rural residential, one acre. And they end up with, you know, 14 or 15 more homes, because we put it in there.
Yeah, he rezoned to R20 in that case. So, he rezoned to a more dense zoning district in that case. So, yeah, to do something like that, they would have to do what was done for Smith Farms, where they come to you for a rezoning. These are the performance standards for a byright development. So, if I have a rural residential parcel, and I'm gonna go do cluster development, and I'm not rezoning it.
But, I always had the vision that a cluster development would be that you could put your homes as close as you want with some minimal for, because of fire, fire and life safety. Then, as long as you have the open space around it, that would equivalent size.
Exactly. You're correct.
Okay, that still applies, right?
Yep.
The issue, though, and I'm kind of waiting to see how that plays out in Fenton Mill. That's a cluster development. We know that the homes are on tiny little postage stamps lots. The roads are much smaller as a result, because there's, there's less distance to connect all of those lots. I really question, what's it do for parking? What are some of the other issues that I'm going to see with a cluster versus a conventional build? And I don't know. What's bothering me here in terms of going forward with a, with a change to our cluster development to allow down to five acres, I don't know what the problems are. And I'm sitting here thinking, why would I do that if I don't put my homework, do my homework upfront and understand what issues I'm going to get into? I, I'm struggling with, the concept of clusters seems to make sense. It leaves more open area. But, what are the challenges? What are the problems? What have, what have other communities found in terms of development problems when they've allowed clustering? And I, I don't have that data, and I'm sitting here thinking, why would I make a change unless I understand that data?
Okay, I'm gonna talk a little bit about that piece, because we actually did look at existing cluster developments that have been done since 1995. So, we wanted to get a good grasp on, like, what was the average lot size? What was the average common area and things like that? Because we wanted to see where we were working from when we were exploring some of the changes we made. So, I'm gonna, if you would allow me, I do wanna talk about that a little bit, and then, we can talk about some of your questions about, you know, I heard you mentioned parking specifically. And so, is the, we can talk about that. I mean, is the concern there that I, my lot's too small, and then, if I have three cars, I can't fit them in the driveway? Is that the concern? I just wanna make sure I'm understanding your concern there.
I think as long, as soon as you compress houses into a smaller area and reduce the amount of road space, we end up with a parking problem. That's just my perception.
And that's one of my big problems, okay? I'm not gonna, I don't wanna see any more, any more development where people have to park on sidewalks.
This is byright.
Right.
I don't, I don't care. I don't wanna see any more developments where people park on sidewalks, okay? I mean, it just, you know, they, we play a word game with this, but in the end, we want a place that people may not wanna mow their lawns. Maybe they wanna live, but there better be a place where they can, all the cars can park, and a reasonable number of cars. I mean, it just doesn't make sense, because we're just creating, we get bombarded by homeowners who are upset with developers for various reasons. And they're like, God, how, what are we gonna do about the parking, okay?
Are you confusing single-family homes versus that kind of houses that are together?
It all comes together. This is the same thing, and we got cluster developments everywhere.
Yeah, I live in one.
Well, yes, but you got a lot of parking.
I got parking. I got a two-car garage.
And a golf course, a golf course behind your house.
But, but we sacrifice land so we would have more open space.
Well, that's a good point, that's a good point, because what Doug just said, that we would have more open space with a cluster development. I think what you have is more continuous open space, because the open space requirements are still there. Even if they divided it up in little bits, it would be scattered all over the place. With this case, I think, from what I've seen, is like when they do a cluster development, like in Kilmeade Creek, you have a lot of homes close together. is like when they do a cluster development, like in Kilmeade Creek, you have a lot of homes close together, but you have huge open around it, okay? But I think the space is the same, is supposed to kind of work out the same amount. I mean, in my neighborhood, it's the same way. In fact, you'll go out and you'll see, you'll see just big, empty fields with nothing in it. And people can go out and throw frisbees, chase them, run their dogs and stuff like that. So, you know, just because we're cramming homes together and maybe making it more affordable, which Smith Farms not, okay, but you're making it, you're making it affordable, it doesn't mean that we have to destroy the amenities, or we could at least provide these folks with some amenities so we don't end up with low, you know, low, not just low-cost housing, but we end up with slums, okay?
So Earl, I got this question for you, since you're sitting at the helm now for, for the time. Is it, is it the planning department's idea to try to put a home on every piece of land that we have in York County? To cram as many homes, as many buildings in York County? Because I'm confused. Go ahead.
No, I would say no. This doesn't increase the density at all. I mean, this really allows the development, less development because you're not having to fill the entire prop, you know, if you've got a 20-acre parcel, you're not cutting it up into 20 lots. You may be cutting it up into maybe 28 lots where you have 20 homes, and then you've got large, open space areas or recreation areas, things of that, that are under common ownership by the homeowners association. But this doesn't increase density in any way. And no, I mean, our, we, we are guided by the comprehensive plan that's approved by the book, planning commission and the board that goes to the citizens, and that's what we look at when we look at long-term growth. So the reason we have brought forward these changes to you is because we've been approached by several property owners who have, you know, five to nine acres, and they cannot utilize this concept because you have to have 10 acres to utilize it. And if we reduce, our, our idea of reducing it down is to assist those property owners to not have to use so much land. We have a property owner in the Darby-Furby area. They have like 9.8 acres, and they cannot utilize this. They have some areas that they can't build on that are wetlands or environmentally sensitive. And if they were, if they had this technique, they could cluster all the homes up near the front of the property, right on the road, and then preserve the entire back portion of the property for open recreation, you know, preservation, things of that nature. But no, our, our goal is not to put a home or build something on every piece of property. I mean, we have landscape requirements, things of that nature than in the ordinance. You know, as Caitlin's explained, if, if, if somebody brings you a rezoning for a plan development, there are components in there for open space and recreation, things that we want to see, that we have heard from previous boards and the citizens, that they want to make sure that these kinds of components are integrated in any kind of rezoning process that you do. So if you're looking at it, we never bring anything forward to you that we, you know, would have a concern about the density, where we would be recommending for an increased density over what they would normally be allowed.
Okay, so I'm, I'm confused. The previous section that we talked about, you guys moved it up and not down for open space. Here, you're moving it down.
No, we haven't changed it at all. It's the same. It's still 10%.
Or five acres.
Oh, we're, we're dropping, as I, well, like I was saying-
From 10, 10 acres to five acres.
Right, so right now, you're required to have 10 acres to utilize this concept at all.
Okay, so if I have, if I have 30 acres-
You could do cluster.
I could do a cluster. And you're telling me that the density's not going to be any different if I have to give up 10 acres as opposed to five? I, I'm, I'm not following that.
You're saying the minimum, you're saying the minimum now is going to be five as opposed to 10?
So I think we're conflating different things. We're conflating different things. So what we're saying is, so right now, the ordinance says, if you want to do cluster, you have to have a minimum of 10 acres. So if you have 10, 12, 20, 200 acres, you can do cluster. If you have eight acres, you cannot do a cluster technique. You have to do a, a normal subdivision. So you have to cut your parcel up into eight lots, no matter what it looks like. It has to be eight lots. So that first development that she showed you, this one?
Yeah.
So this is, they didn't have 10 acres, so they could not do cluster. They couldn't take all those homes and, you know, make them a little smaller and fit in here. You know, if they, they just don't have the ability because they don't have 10 acres or more. Now, if they grabbed these other parcels, then maybe it would have looked a little bit different. But the only thing we're reducing is the minimum number of acres you have to have to be able to use the technique. The density doesn't change. If you have eight acres, you're still probably only going to get eight lots. You know, if you have eight acres, you may not get that many because the, the factor equation in there, that's in there, kind of reduces it down a little bit. So you may not get as many lots as you think you might be able to get.
I don't follow that rationale.
Okay.
Because if I have eight acres and I have to have 10 acres to do a cluster, I can't do it.
Correct.
So I put what you have right there because I have to do space out.
Exactly.
But if I have 30, you're telling me I only have to do five acres of open land and not 10 anymore? So now I'm putting more houses there.
No, sir, we're, we're, in this, we, okay, every single cluster development, minimum 40% has to be open space. We're not changing that. We are not changing the required open space in a cluster development. We're just explaining, if I have a chunk of land, we're talking about, okay, if I want to utilize cluster subdivision performance standards on my chunk of land, right now, it has to be 10 or more acres to even do that. What we're proposing is, we're lowering that to five. To use the technique, you still have to have the same amount of ratio of open space.
How about a what-if? You could do, you got, let's say you got five acres. We go to five acres, okay? And it's a function of zoning. If they're in rural residential, okay, they still got, they can, and they got five acres, they can build five homes, okay? If you go to R20, they could get 10 homes roughly, right? Or if, and if they go down even, if they can get it rezoned to 7, 7500s, whatever that is, or 13 or something, then they can put a lot more homes in there, but they still got to meet the 40% on the five acres. Okay, right?
Yes, you have to have, you have to have that.
So you would have the houses, as you go down in zoning, you're getting houses closer and closer together, but you still got the same, same piece of land, same size, five acres. That's all you got. So it's kind of the zoning aspect of it that's going to, that's going to talk about the density. That's how you get to the really, really, it's like a, yeah, it's like a-
This does not affect density at all. The density will be the same if it's a conventional versus if it's a cluster.
We're not changing any zoning at all.
We're not making density increase at all.
So when we talk about acreage, we're talking about developable acreage.
Correct.
So it has to be at least, right now, it has to be at least 10 developable acres. You could be on 30 acres of land, but it has to be 10 developable acres, right?
10 gross acres.
All right, so we're saying, the proposal is to reduce it to five developable acres. But if you, but that's going to reduce the number of plots that you'll be able to develop, to put houses on, if you go, if you already, you only have five acres to work with, right? Right, so, so the example you gave, the one developer, he said on 9.8, can't do it. So we say reduce it by five. So if, if, if he could do it on 9.8, I would imagine he could, just throw a number out there, he could put seven homes up. If you reduce it to five, he can't put seven homes up because you've reduced the number of developable acres and based upon-
But see, it's still, he still has a nine-acre parcel, he still has a nine-acre parcel, but if you reduce it down to five, that means he would be allowed to use the cluster technique, is all. Now, if he only had five acres, then he still could use the cluster technique. Right now, he has 10, or he, he doesn't have 10, so he can't meet it. If you were to, if we take it down to our recommended five, that he's still in that area, and still, he still would only be able to develop, as you said, seven, maybe eight parcels on there. But they would be able to be clustered near the road instead of having to cut the entire property up and try to fit houses on it.
But in that case, then the problem is now you're putting seven homes on five acres instead of seven homes on 9.8 acres.
Nope, nope, you're not putting, you'd be five homes on five acres. Let's just make it really easy. If you have five acres, five homes. If you have six acres, six homes. Seven acres, seven homes. 30 acres, 30 homes. Depending on the zoning.
If it's rural residential. If I got five acres and one acre is wetlands, do you count the wetlands as part of the five acres?
So the way it's written, gross acreage, however, when I, developer, do my lot yield calculation, I can only count developable acreage. So wetlands, stuff that's under four foot elevation, stuff that's 30% larger slopes, does not count as developable acreage. For me trying to figure out how many lots I can build.
I just want to figure out, I want to figure out how many homes, if I got five acres, now ours, I'm zoned R20, one of those acres is, is a, is wetlands, okay?
Can't be used.
Do I still get to put 10 homes on it?
No, so you don't.
Okay, now, did we not go through, up to the Supreme Court on a battle over this issue at the Belmont Apartments? Because they, they needed another, they wanted to add a third floor, and what our point was, that you can't use the lake. And the court came back and said, yeah, you can use the lake. That's why they got the third level of apartments. Have we just not, did we not go through this 20 years ago?
Just 20 years ago.
That's, that's different from what we're talking about.
Yeah, my-
Well, it's a, it's a use of property density.
Yes, right. She was still in elementary school.
I mean, that, I mean, apartments is a completely different animal than residential subdivision, single-family residential subdivision.
Right, but the point is, though, if, if, if we make limitations based upon available land, whether it's an apartment or a cluster home, is, is that argument still applicable?
Yes, I'm trying not to make it too complicated. Because, yes, there are calculations for removal of piece, some of the land that's not buildable upon, like, you know, dominion easements or wetlands, as you brought up. Those are not, those are not counted in the calculation. So if you have six acres and there's an acre of wetlands, that acre's out. So now you only have five developable acres. Does that help? I'm trying to make sure, I'm trying to help explain it in a way that you all-
Yeah, I think, I think our concern is that we don't want to overdevelop and, and create too much density.
Just popping houses up everywhere because somebody can't do it with what the land that they bought.
Well, they could. I mean, the nine-point acres, they could develop it.
Right.
You know, they could. It's just going to be, they're going to just fill the entire parcel, and they'll have to, you know, do other things to move, maneuver around the wetlands, things of that nature. But they're not getting any additional density.
So let's use this real-world example, this 9.8 acres for this one developer. Roughly, conventional development, how many plats could they get out of that?
Nine, nine acres.
Okay.
And rural residential.
Rural residential.
And rural residential, correct.
All right. Let's say the, let's say they, they find another point, too, and it becomes 10 acres, and they want to make it cluster instead of conventional. Again, 10, 10 plats?
It's po, yes, I'm going to just say yes.
Okay.
We don't take anything out.
So, so if we say, we're going to reduce it to five, how many plats could he put on that now?
But still the 10.
It's still, it's still 10.
Because it's 10 acres. He made it 10 acres. If he, if he only has five acres, it's only five.
Only five.
Only five. So it's whatever the zoning district is underneath it. So if it's rural residential, that's one acre per lot, which is why I'm kind of trying to stay in that one acre area because I think it might be too confusing to jump down.
So essentially, reducing the, from 10 to five does not increase density, home building density than what we have today?
Correct, that is correct.
It just allows for cluster building.
It just lets them put them closer together. They don't have to build as long of a road. They don't have to extend sewer and water and stormwater lines, all those things.
Which has some benefits because then you, we end up with more open space.
Exactly.
But you're still having the same, that's what the issue.
What, what does it do to parking?
But, but isn't that addressed?
No.
From what we talked about last?
It has not been addressed yet. You've, you've shortened the length of roads. You've put all those houses together, they're clustered. You've got a lot more green space, I understand that, but you have a lot less asphalt. And that means there's parking issue.
All right, well.
Exactly.
All right, so how's that addressed?
Okay. I skipped ahead a little.
Thank you.
I'm going to go to the chart. Okay. So, moving down from the gross acreage section, you'll see in your ordinance, there's a bunch of paragraphs, they're red, they're struck out, and we have a chart. What we did is we took the existing requirements, we put them in a chart to make them easier to read. We did not change anything. So there are, while there aren't a minimum lot size, by virtue of the fact you have to have at a minimum a 30-foot front setback, you have to have a 10-foot side setback, you have to have a 20-foot rear yard, you have to have 20 feet between buildings. That in itself acts as somewhat of a limiting factor to the size of your lot, depending on also the size of your house you're building. And I want to just, and this is really for the benefit of the public watching, cluster subdivision is only for single-family residential homes on their own lot. This is not townhouses, this is not duplexes, this is not multifamily. There are only single-family homes. So in the sense of when you're, and then this is just to address the parking question, single-family homes and single-family lots, they have minimum yard requirements. Can't have a 10-foot front yard in a cluster subdivision. And the parking requirements, which we just adjusted, but again, with the garage, the garage can't count as its own parking space anymore. So you have to have your driveway big enough to accommodate more vehicles now. And that's part of, again, what we did in last month.
What's the width of roads required in a cluster?
The right-of-way has to be 50 feet. The road has to meet VDOT standard. So, and VDOT has different widths, depending on if there's on-street parking or not. So if there's no on-street parking, the width is narrower. If there's on-street parking, the width is wider. Typically, we see, because they do a standard road, so typically, we see a road width of 39 feet.
Unless they go and develop a private road.
If it's a private road, then we don't have to worry about it. It's going to be VDOT specs.
That has to meet VDOT standards.
Just go look at the Rainbrook Village. How wide do you think those streets are? They're lucky, it's their 15 feet.
And that's something we've also addressed in this section. This is also in the subdivision ordinance, but again, the specs for, if you're doing a private street, which I do want to note for, again, I'm jumping ahead of myself a little bit, tied to what we're doing with the gross acreage, we don't want a little tiny subdivision of perhaps six lots to have a private street. They can't maintain that, they can't pay that cost. So we're mandating they have to have a public street in the VDOT system that meets VDOT specs.
Thank you. Are there any more, if there are any more questions, you can open the public hearing, unless you have more to cover.
I covered just about all of it here. We didn't-
Just go back to that one real quick. I mean, that's, I mean, so you just actually, I mean, this is interesting. Basically, on what you said, you, we just restricted a property to where it cannot be developed for housing in some cases. If they have a small cluster, I'm not quite sure what you constitute a small cluster, they can't have the small streets, or can't have private streets. So there's going to be, I'm, I think, the one thing, I'm thinking of lots acres right now. That's, I'm not even sure that's a cluster. But it's got the road in there, the VDOT will not, if you build a VDOT, it's not going to accept the road because of the drainage issues with it. Another part of the neighborhood will be. So if what we're doing here, that, what you're telling me would be almost restrict, would restrict the development of the property, I mean, it would actually deny the developer the right to develop the property. So I'm just, that's, that to me is a big statement.
What we want to do here is, again, balance needs. And looking at, can four, so if you have a subdivision of four homeowners, can they support the maintenance costs of a public street? Because we want the public street to be wide. We want it to be a good street. Our concern was, again, a small subdivision of, you know, again, four or six homeowners, could they support the maintenance cost of a private street? That would be very expensive, and so-
So how big is a cluster development? And you're saying five, five acres would be enough to pave, pay for a street?
For a private street, we had concerns, again, of a subdivision, like, of what you said, five acres, maybe five lots. That would be challenging to pay the maintenance cost for a private street, and we recognize that, which is why we're saying these, it needs to be a public street in the VDOT system that the state maintains. We don't want that cost to be-
The lot say, John, it actually has 42 streets, 42 homes on it, 43 homes that is going to be built, okay? They're being built now. A part of the streets are going to be private. So those things are millions of dollars. They're just that expensive. So I'm not sure I understand what, 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 what is the minimum number you think it's going to be able to afford private street? Because the cluster development is going to, all the land is going to be built, and the streets are going to be, have to meet probably VDOT standards anyway, right? Even, even if VDOT doesn't accept them, right?
These streets do have to be built to VDOT standard, that is correct.
How does this affect, how does this affect, then, family subdivisions?
So, family subdivisions are, honestly, they're an entirely different animal, and you, we have never seen a cluster subdivision for a family, because family subdivision have very strict requirements. The lot has to be due to an immediate family member. There's restrictions on who that person can be. Again, it has to be like your child, or your wife, or your parents. So, these are often two or three lots at most.
Yes, but those people then can sell their property to anybody, okay? They don't have to be sold, don't be sold. I mean, once they're built and sold to a family-
And they cannot re, and they cannot re-subdivide it.
Then they can sell it to somebody else, which goes to Wayne's concern about, oh, you're building on every, on every, you know, every lot, because family subdivisions, there's a way of getting around this stuff. So, I just reason I bring it up, is, I don't have any answer. You guys know this better than I do, but I just don't have an answer for that, but I'm just trying to understand it.
I think with family subdivision, that, again, these are, we're kind of dealing with two different sets of regulation. We're talking about two different regulations right now. So, I mean, and just for the purpose of this, I want to keep the focus on cluster performance standards and cluster development, if that's okay?
Kayla, you did a terrific job.
Okay. Do you want me to talk about the recreation changes, or do you want to, it's, your call, ma'am.
Oh, go ahead.
Okay. Okay. I do want to talk about one change we made. Right now, cluster developments have to have a forty-five-foot open space buffer around the edge of it. What we saw with these, and this is, again, a lesson learned from existing conditions, is, the way it's written right now, you, if you have woods in that open space strip, you have to preserve the woods. What we see is, okay, they preserve the open space strip of woods, the interior gets completely cleared, and now you have this stand of possibly marginally deciduous trees that becomes exposed. Sometimes they die and fall down, they're see-through in the winter. What we want is an actual buffer. And so, what we've proposed is, you still have a forty-five-foot open space strip, it has to be vegetated at a transitional buffer, type thirty-five transitional buffer, evergreen trees and shrubs to achieve a screening effect. And we don't have this problem with, again, exposed trees that become diseased, die, or, again, don't actually function as a buffer.
Evergreens can be pines, and pine trees. You're talking about pine trees, too, right? I mean-
We want full-to-ground evergreens in transitional buffers, so-
Okay, I'll, I'll look at Sheila's, your district, your, your neighborhood down there.
Oh, yes, I know.
Sanctuary.
Yep.
Thirty-five foot, thirty, or type thirty-five, it's got a million pine, little pine trees. Those pine trees grow up, all of a sudden.
We do. That's why when we take in, we, honestly, when we review transitional buffers, if someone has lobolli pine, we tell the developer, "No, you're not. You have to do full-to-ground evergreen." Because lobolli pines, you're right, they grow tall, they don't screen anything at all. All right.
Continue.
Okay. One change we also made, this is kind of mirrors what we did in plan development. This was for recreation components, recreation components in cluster development. And this was, again, looking at, if we're going to reduce the gross acreage where we have smaller subdivisions, what kind of recreation amenities can they support? So, we talked to a bunch, I talked to a bunch of different HOAs of varying size. I talked to large developments, I talked to small ones like Clearwater Cove, and said, "What are your amenities? What's the affordability? How can you, how, how are you doing with actually paying for these components?" And so, from what I heard overwhelmingly from the smaller ones, was, we rely entirely on volunteers, or, because we can't afford a management agency, and we can't afford to maintain some of the more expensive amenities that right now are prescriptive and mandated, such as you have to put in a playground, and a picnic area, and a field. So, again, kind of mirroring what we did in plan development, we're saying you have to have these required categories of recreational amenity, active, passive, both of those. More flexibility in what actually goes in, and recognition of, again, if you have a smaller subdivision, six people, six households, can they support everything we're prescriptively requiring, or do we make it flexible to be appropriate to the context of the development that's being proposed? And so, the last change we made, there's an existing density credit. This is when you voluntarily, as a developer, increase your recreation area above the minimum. That won't work for, again, if we're going to do this reduction from ten gross acres to five gross acres, that won't function for something that's under ten acres. So, we're saying you can only do that if your development is larger than ten acres. There's also an existing public facility credit. So, what this is, is if I develop, or say, "I'm going to put land aside for a school or a library," I can get a density credit. This, in the context of byright development, has not been used. We don't foresee it being used. We're proposing to strike it. And then there's the public street bit that I mentioned earlier. All right, I'm going to tie this all together. What we're doing really in this exercise, we're updating standards, and this is both for the changes we're making to recreation standards for plan development, and the performance standards for open space cluster subdivision. Again, updating standards, looking at lessons learned, what's worked, what has not worked, incorporating that. A lot of this is, especially in four oh two, the section we just talked about, clarifying formatting and just making the ordinance easier to read and understand. So, again, I mentioned this earlier, the planning commission recommended approval of this, four to zero, one abstaining. So, therefore, staff, we're recommending approval of this application. You can do that by adopting twenty-five, twenty-one as written in your proposed draft ordinance. Thank you so much for your time. I know this was a lot of material to talk about. I'm here if you have any questions for staff. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Kayla did a great job.
You did a super job.
Thanks for hanging in there.
I'm going to open the public hearing now, and I have one person who'd like to speak. Ron Struble, name and address, please. You've got three minutes.
Thank you. Good evening. Ron Struble, two zero five, Shady Bluff Point. I want to tell you all first, when this first hit the agenda, and I looked at the documents when the planning commission saw it, my eyes watered like there was no tomorrow. So, your confusion was, I, I appreciate people like this that can go through that and try to make sense of these things. So, I appreciate that. Bottom line up front, we, we, the Conserv York County Foundation, support this effort here, and this resolution. I want to say, I do have some concerns with the eight acre or five acre, maybe that's taken out, I don't know. But I just, I do have some concerns, especially with the parking, as Mr. Holroyd did mention, too. I do want to mention also that, you have a picture before you, this is my favorite, Springfield Road, second only to Fenton Mill, okay? And what I want to make sure, and with, with Caitlin and Earl, is, you know, what you see here is instance, this was seven years ago, we've moved so far past those days, but this is an example where this gentleman here, Mr. White, has zero, zero dot zero buffer, okay? You can see it almost kind of reduced down to nothing. So, the developer could have fit two more lots in. Across the street from this one, the neighbor there has five lots, zero dot zero buffer, okay? That the property line of that house touches the other owner's property line. So, I just want to make sure that it's very clear that the buffers, this is a chance to fix those buffers if it's in the, in the zoning amendment. So, I'll leave that question to you all to sort out. But that is one of our biggest concerns here. I want to talk about the collaboration as well. When this first came out, as I told you, my eyes watered. I talked to Earl, I later talked to Caitlin, the planning commission went through all this. And the difference I've noticed in the collaboration at the staff level in the last year and a half or so, has been tremendous, okay? Caitlin and Earl listened to our concerns, and went through the usual process, but where I thought we were regularly stonewalled on the staff level at times, I just found a very open staff with Mr. Anderson and Caitlin, and listening to our concerns and adjusting as necessary at some points. So, I want to thank them very much for all of this. That's all I have to say. Thank you very much. Have a great evening.
Thank you. I don't have anybody signed up, but is anybody like to speak on this issue? If not, I'll close the public hearing. It was a pleasure for the board.
Madam Chair, I'd actually like to table this amendment. I, I'd like staff to come back with a little better definition on clustering, and what has been the reaction, or the, or the pros and cons of this in other communities around us? The whole issue on parking hasn't been resolved in my mind. I, I just think this needs a little bit more work. I'm, I'm good with the rest of the package, but I'm struggling on the cluster.
On the cluster?
Yeah.
And, and, and I, I support that, because as we're going through this, this is a lot to digest here, and there may be people who, after listening to the review, may come to another public hearing with just some more feedback. I, I believe I got my head wrapped around what's here. The only thing I'm not comfortable with is the ten to five reduction in the cluster home requirement, because I don't, much like Mr. Holroyd, I don't know the implications of that, and I'm, I'm concerned about giving a blank check to say, "Do it," and we're going to hope for the best. I feel like I'm trying to merge, I tracked a trailer without a side-view mirror, and I'm just hoping that there's nobody there when I merge. Maybe one of the changes we could have is, maybe that request needs to be a special use permit to give the board a chance to understand what the ask is, is it a good fit, and give the community a chance to respond back to it, to, to, to do a development in less, less than, less than ten acres. If we're, if we're going to table this, we have time to talk what we want to do there. But I really feel like that we need to be able to evaluate those, to me, special use cases, and not just say, "Go do it, and hopefully it'll all work out in the end." So, but I, at the end, I, I support tableing it, and let's, let's, let's put a little bit more work on it.
My concern, again, is the, is, it's easy to go down, it's very hard to go back up. So, if we're going to, if we're going to reduce down from ten acres to five, I really want to see what the pros and cons, like Doug, and find out what, what's some of the traps that we're going to find that could bite us in the butt later on, and then we're back up here going, "Uh-uh, we made a mistake," like up here at, behind the, beside the food line, parking all up in the driveway, and sidewalks and all that stuff. We, that was a bad deal. So, we changed that. I just don't want to change this just to be changing it, go, "I think this is going to work perfectly," because we don't have all the information. I think, I'd like to see more, I'd like to get more education on what other jurisdictions, other counties are doing, and what are some of their concerns, what are, what are some of their issues that they're having with these, and is parking a problem? That, that would be my recommendation.
My only issue with this is that a lot of work has gone into this, the, the planning commission has run through it, and we do change the ordinances as issues come up, and we realize, but this hasn't been put in place yet. So, I would say we should vote for it, and then if it has to be adjusted, we can still, we can do that later on. But basically, this is, this is a good ordinance.
Well, Sheila, I can't, I, I, I understand what you're saying, and I, and Earl, you and Caitlin, I mean, the staff has done, I mean, the questions I was asking, I think with threads back over twenty-some years, okay? And you just made a great statement about, and I think back, you know, Ron, you know, you're, the problems that you guys have, and Doug, the things you had up in your district, and you saw these coming about. And I think of the boards, that all the boards have come before, you know, that have been on before this, and that was the problem. We had no idea of the impact, or we would not have passed this stuff, okay? And I mean, even, even when Walt was on the board, he had no idea. I mean, we, a lot of times, we just rely on the supervisor from that district to give us a thumbs up or thumbs down, and if the supervisor doesn't really understand it, or doesn't step up to ask a question, or just doesn't know what to ask, we end up creating stuff. And it, and then, once it's built, oh my God, there's no coming back from it, right? So, I'm, I'm not opposed to this effort. I mean, this was tremendous, very, it's educational, and, and, and I wasn't confused, when I, I wasn't confused about open space and recreational space and, and all that stuff, because I've lived through this already, okay? I understand it. But what, what happens is, I need, I need, I need to have it so that anybody that lives in a neighborhood that butts up against this stuff, or has to live with it, understands what we're doing. And we've got to have them understand it. I have a great understanding of this. I just don't think people around me have it, and I can't communicate with folks if they don't understand what the hell we're talking about. So, good case in point is this slide, great slide. One of the problems I've always had is, we have no buffer between residential property. There is no buffer, okay, except when a business is there. And there was a time when a business, when you were, when a business was, whether you built first, or the business was built first, that that buffer actually came over to the homeowner's responsibility. And so, they couldn't use their property. See, these kind of things, you have to stumble across when a homeowner comes up to you and goes, "I can't use my property. What the heck are you guys doing up here?" So, I want us to have, this time, a really good understanding. It's a major change. Caitlin, you said it, is a major change, and it's a lot of stuff, although it may be subtle. We've got a whole bunch of new board members up here, and we got a couple of old board members have lived through this, and we got to understand this stuff better, okay? We've just got to understand it. So, let's go back and digest this a little bit better. The five acres, I think is interesting, okay? I just think it's interesting. I'm not necessarily opposed to it. I'm not, you know, I'm not necessarily for it. I just don't, I just want to understand what these effects are going to be. And I'm not sure I'm ready to run out and, and then create buffers in residential, between residential property, because we still have a lot of land that's not going to be cluster, okay? And, and so, I don't want to necessarily put restrictions. But a lot of our homeowner associations, and I live in one, that has a fifty-foot buffer all the way around the neighborhood, okay? And it's just natural trees and stuff like that. It's great. Not all neighborhoods have that. A lot, a lot of neighborhoods don't have. So, anyway, I, I, I think we need to come back and just, we've got questions? We got, we got, and the thing is, Sheila, the board needs to talk, and I need to hear your questions and your concerns, and your, and so I can get the, I can either build on it, or if we can answer it, okay?
You know, that's, that's very interesting, Tom. I've been looking forward to this one, because there are people who own not ten-plus acres, but smaller acreage, that they would like to be able to develop in this way. And this opens the door for them to be able to do that. And I have one in my district, for example, is all set to go to do it, because now they can actually do it, because the acreage is not ten acres. I mean, they've got like nine and a half acres or something like that. Now, because this has been presented, and it's passed through the planning commission, they have plans to develop that for their church and their people. And so, but this is something that we all have to think about, because there are people out there that have smaller plots of land that they would like to be able to develop, and this opens it up for them to do.
Sheila, this, this is-
Madam Chair, I don't think we're turning it down. I think what we have asked-
No, we're not saying no. How long would it take you to get, put together a packet to bring back to us? Two months?
We, we could have it for you.
Would we, would we table this to the next meeting?
I just have a clarif, question, clarification question. So, it sounds like what the concerns are, are with the open space cluster development, not necessarily the planned development recreation changes. So, would you be okay if we moved the resolution forward, just striking the open space cluster? Let's, let's let the county attorney-
Yeah. If I may, Madam Chair, the only problem I have with that is, you'd probably have to re-advertise the new cluster portion, because it would be a wholly new-
Right. Yeah, for sure.
Thing. So, if you want to, if it's only going to be for a brief period of time, I think it makes more sense to continue the entire-
Continue this the entire, the entire way.
We're talking thirty days. You said, y'all think you can do it in thirty days.
And then if they ultimately determine they don't-
We'll just push it back thirty days.
We can. Yep, we would just suggest table it to the next meeting.
Push it, not until the work session, but to the regular board meeting.
Correct. Not the work session, but give them full month.
October, September, September.
And if your desire is to continue it to a meeting where you can receive public comment again, then I would recommend that you reopen the public hearing, continue the public hearing to a meeting with a public hearing. And if, if the desire of the board at that meeting is to get rid of, or to not pursue the cluster part, you can strike that all out of the ordinance and then pass everything else at that time.
Yeah. I recommend just table it for a month.
What did you say?
Table it for a month.
Table it for a month.
Specifically, we want to, we want to reopen the public hearing and continue the public hearing to the next public meeting, right?
Whatever date you choose.
In September, third week in September.
And, and to, and to your point, I, I think if a developer came to us and said, "I have nine-point-eight acres, I want to do cluster, but I got to have ten," would you let us do that? We'd, we'd probably, yeah, we're not going to hold you to two, but we're being asked to take it from ten to, ten to five. And again, I don't know the implications of that well enough to feel comfortable going, "Yeah, that's why we need some more time to digest this and understand it," to speak to Mr. Holroyd's concerns about parking, and also make it, we do not want to overdevelop, overdevelop York County. I think the feedback we're getting, that may be not be a concern, but before we rush into this, let's just- into this, let's just take a pause, digest a little bit better.
Sheila, hang on a second, we're not doing discussion here, okay? So here's a question I got for you. So one of the things, if I owned 9.8 acres, and we came up with this proposal, and I wanted to maximize my return, I'm going to come in here and ask for rezoning. If it's R1, I'm going to come in and ask for an R20. If it's R20, I'm going to come in and ask for something smaller that would, that would work within this scheme. Now, if it's not in there to do that, then we need to make it very clear that it's not, or put whatever restriction. So if our concern is overdevelopment, you know, is it, is overdevelopment because we have allowed tighter clustering of homes? Or is it now we're going to have to, because I guarantee you, you're going to have to face the rezoning that's going to be proposed.
Mm-hmm.
It's going to be your constituents, especially you guys up here, it's going to be, you guys are going to be coming back, because your constituents are going to be leaning on you to rezone the property so they can make it a tighter cluster, okay?
Yeah, and we'll have to address that, yeah.
Earl, did you have something you wanted to add to this?
Nope, Mr. Shepherd did an amazing job of explaining what I was going to say.
You can just see the storm coming this way.
Okay, we have a motion, I believe, to table.
I think we have a motion to reopen the public hearing and...
Continue the public hearing to the next meeting.
We're continuing this to, for one month, is that the way we are?
For the public hearing.
September 16.
But we have to reopen the public hearing, because you closed it a moment ago, so we have, so the motion is to reopen the public hearing and continue the public hearing to the next scheduled...
16th, September 16th.
The option is up to us to whether we're going to have a...
Okay, you got your work cut out.
So I'm not sure that's a big deal.
Thank you all.
So the motion is to continue the public hearing to September 16th.
But before you do that, just say the magic words, I reopen the public hearing. That's your prerogative as chair, just say reopen the public hearing.
Reopen the public hearing?
Yes.
Okay.
Now the motion is to continue the public hearing until the, to the 16th.
Yes, that's what I thought I said, but I wasn't sure.
Madam Chair, who made the motion?
Doug.
I did.
Okay. The motion made by Mr. Holroyd is to continue proposed ordinance number 25-21 to the September 16th Board of Supervisors meeting. Mr. Holroyd?
Yes.
Mr. Drury?
Yes.
Mr. Roan?
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mrs. Knoll?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you very much. The next public hearing we have is proposed amendment to Chapter 7.1 of the Building Regulations of the York County Code.
That's all?
That's all, okay, thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, thank you for your time this evening. For those of you who are unaware, I am the building official now here in York County. I've been here for about nine years, and it's an honor to have been selected for that. So thank you, Mr. Bellamy.
Your name?
I'm sorry?
Your name?
Oh, Cory, Carney, sorry.
Thank you, Cory.
Thank you. A little nervous, you guys are kind of intimidating. So I promise to keep this...
Not in the least.
Brief.
It's just us.
We don't kill and cook the staff and eat them.
I promise to keep this brief and no math this time, so...
Yeah. We'll find a pie for you.
Yeah. That was interesting. I usually watch these, I'm usually watching these at home on my phone, so it's kind of nice to be here in person and witness a pie to the face, that's not something you usually get, so. I said no math, but there are some horrifying numbers that I do have to show you here. So this was sent to me, as well as all the other building officials in the Commonwealth, by the State Building Codes Office, and there has been an increase in child drownings this year in Virginia swimming pools. This proposed amendment to the property maintenance portion of the building regulations, Chapter 7.1, is an attempt to curb that here. I don't believe, in the nine, almost nine years I've been here, that we've had any child drownings in pools, and I would like to keep it that way. So essentially, this proposed amendment would give me the authority to sort of enforce maintenance of pool enclosures for all existing pools, commercial, residential, otherwise, within the county. And just to sort of cut it off, because I know it's probably going to come up, this applies to existing pools, new pools, once we've gotten outside of our two-year grace period afterwards for regular permit enforcement, once the pool is completed, and this only applies to the code at the time, that was in effect at the time in which the pool was built. So you wouldn't be required, as a pool owner, to upgrade your standards around your pool perimeter, you would just be required to maintain it as it was designed and installed under that code section.
Cory, I had a question for you, though.
Absolutely.
If I read the reading, or the end of the second paragraph, it said, however, once the installation surpasses two years from final inspection, the building official has no authority to enforce barrier violations.
That's correct.
Is that being changed? Or is that still the case?
Why would we, why would we do that? Like, that's crazy.
So the way it works is, I have two years upon the, after the completion of the final inspection, or the date of the CO, depending on what it is, to find any violations after the fact. Once I get outside that two years, I don't have that ability.
How do we change that?
The property maintenance code comes in after that. So you, as the board, have the ability to adopt any portions of that code that you wish. We have a couple that have already been adopted, that you probably would see in that amendment in front of you. I'm just adding a section about pool enclosures that is already existing in the property maintenance code, so just asking that we include that one in the bundle that we already have for property maintenance.
I just want to make sure that 10 years down the road, 20 years down the road, we have authority to go on that property and inspect it, and make sure that that barrier is up to date, because people don't keep them up, and that's how kids drown.
Absolutely, yeah.
And so I just want to make sure, if it's in some other ordinance, that we're not limited to two years, and we can do spot inspections or something that, or a complaint comes in and says, hey, my next-door neighbor, the pool is wide open, the fence, the gate stays wide open, whatever.
And that's what prompted this change, is I've gotten several of those calls just since February, when I took over. And you don't like getting them, because, especially knowing that I can't do anything about it now, so after a few of them that I didn't like to receive, and, you know, finding out that I'm beyond the two-year limitation that I have, I really needed to do something about it. So I made a promise to the last homeowner I spoke to that I would bring this to your attention, so here we are.
You have two-year limitation as a building inspector?
Currently, currently. So currently, under the Virginia Construction Code, or Virginia Residential Code that it would be built under, I have two years after the completion of the final inspection to find any open violations. Whether they occurred before or after, really has no bearing on it, but at that two-year point, then it becomes...
Property maintenance.
A property maintenance issue, correct.
And we're changing the code to say, you have to continue that safety standard...
Yes, sir.
Once you move into the property maintenance days.
And is that indefinite?
Yes.
Okay.
That's for the life of the pool building, whatever.
And that's under the maintenance code or ordinance?
Cory, can you give us specifics as to how this is going to help you keep kids from drowning?
So essentially, this gives me the authority to enforce that people maintain their pools.
Okay, when you say maintain a pool, isn't it access to the pool, is that...
It's the barrier.
So I misspoke, the pool enclosure itself.
Yeah.
So the enclosure, the safety around, keeping people out of the pool area who don't belong there, like small children, is really what we're going for here, so...
Is the barrier around there generally is a fence of some type, right?
Typically.
A wall fence, chain link fence, wood fence? Are we changing, is that the state code that dictates the minimum? Or is that, a lot of times, it's insurance companies will dictate, if you don't have a six-foot fence, but I think in Virginia, it's five. I mean, is it anything about that, or are we changing here?
No, so we're not changing any of the regulations on the barriers themselves, other than this ordinance only gives me authority after the two-year statute of limitations that I have to enforce maintenance of that barrier under the code under which it was built. So if you built your pool 20 years ago, I now can tell you, hey, you haven't maintained your pool barrier for 20 years, now you need to start maintaining it.
So what's the end game of this, not, if they don't respond, you tell them and they don't respond?
So it becomes a civil penalty, much like a zoning violation would be grass or something of that nature. So it would be, it would start with a $100 fine, and then we would ask for the court to order abatement at that point. So it would sort of make them fix it. We're going to start with a standard notice of violation, hey, someone called, or we were in the neighborhood, and we noticed that your pool barrier is not being maintained, please maintain it, put it back up. If permits are necessary, we'll let them know if they're, a permit required to install a new section of fence that had fallen, something to that nature, we would ask for that.
In our code, do we specify the barrier?
It's not in our code, no. The barrier is based on the International Swimming Pool Spa Code, which is...
It's a federal code.
It's a reference from the Virginia Construction Code.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Sure.
Thank you.
Okay, very good, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
So real quick, so this section here, in blue, is going to allow you to do the inspections past two years, where it says Section 302.2 enclosure, cell, apply the barriers around existing swimming pools, hot tubs, and/or spas. That gives you, adding that verbiage gives you the ability to continue past two years maintaining the...
Yes.
Correct, that's a section the board has already given the building official, the ability to enforce those sections that were adopted of the property maintenance code, so this just adds to those sections.
All right, understood. We'll wait till the discussion.
Can I go? I've got two people signed up to speak at this, the public hearing, I'm opening the public hearing, the first one is Pam Pouchot.
Again, you were talking about the volunteers and how wonderful they are, but what is not noticed, or was not brought to our attention, was the people who do the Adopt a Highway Through VDOT, I belong to an organization, Peninsula Indivisible, and we do two miles with 134 four times a year. Be nice if they got a little bit of benefit as well. Okay, Pam Pouchot, Kimberly Court.
Thank you.
I used to have a swimming pool. Many, many years ago, we had hurricane fall and dropped two trees in there and destroyed everything. So we yanked ours out. By the way, you don't need a permit to do that, so the county just taxed me on it continually, I didn't know that for a while. Anyway, on one side, I have a neighbor who opens his pool every year, he maintains it, not a problem, but he never, no, I can't say never, he rarely has his gate locked, it's open. And also, he has two boards from a six-foot fence that are missing, so a small child could easily walk through it. That concerns me, but until date, I have had nobody that gave a hoot besides me. And we have a lot of small children now in our neighborhood again. On the other side of me, I have a neighbor who has an in-ground pool that hasn't opened at least five years, maybe longer, and he has one of those trampling covers, but they're porous, which means mosquitoes can breed. And I would like to see, as part of the ordinance, somewhere along the line, that if you have a pool that is unopened during the summer months, that you must keep mosquito dunks and put them into the pool, or the cover of the pool that can, if it's impervious, water will collect every time it rains. They are mosquito breeding facilities, and we need to address that. My property is one humongous mosquito, and I feed them regularly when I just go take my garbage out or check my mail. I'd appreciate it if you would do something about that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next person I have signed up is Crystal Wolf.
Hi, Crystal.
Hello, Crystal Wolf, 201 Champions Path, and I would just like to speak in favor. I'm new resident of York County, and I'm just asking you to adopt the local enforcement to be able to fine or hold people accountable for not following codes. Just a little bit of background, I'm a military family, so you know, we don't always get to look into our property prior to purchasing. Sometimes we do, and other times we don't. I live in Woodsataba, so I moved into my home, right behind me is a beautiful, massive, in-ground, uncovered, unfenced pool.
Unfenced.
Yes, so a quick Google Map search, there's about 20 houses in my neighborhood that surround this. So while I can't tell you how many children total live in the surrounding, it's probably a good bit. My house, personally, I have three kids, two three-year-old autistic, non-verbal boys, love to climb, love to get into anything they can. I also have a typical five-year-old, also loves to get into anything he can, massive risk for anyone. I called, luckily called Cory, right when I moved in, I was like, hey, this pool behind me, it is not fenced. If you look at the edge of my property, which is thankfully fenced, with a four-foot fence, it is, I mean, straight behind my house. Like, I can see it from my dining room table, this nice pool. It used to have a fence, the new owner decided he wanted to take it down, it didn't fit his ambiance, he put in a nice, beautiful waterfall. Great. But now, there is no cover, no fence. So they did come out and inspect, but the next day, he had a pop-up temporary fence there, and that is now gone again. So I'm not sure where we go from there, other than coming up with some sort of ability to hold him accountable. I can send a picture, video, every single day, showing, hey, this fence is down, date stamped, whatever anyone needs. But as a mom, this is my worst nightmare with my kids, and I can only do so much, but I am not perfect, so I have alarms and whatever I need, but, you know, seeing a child drown would just be a very big tragedy, in my opinion. So I really hope that you push through this ordinance, and thank you for consideration.
Thank you. This is a violation.
Mm-hmm. It is.
But right now, nothing can be done about it, until we...
Change the ordinance. Until we change the ordinance.
Change the ordinance.
Yes, we will.
Which we're getting ready to.
Okay, is there any more discussion on the board?
Is there, does our ordinance, or in any form, would this be the appropriate ordinance to address the mosquito issue and maintenance of a pool? I mean, that, to me, is pretty serious.
We do, that is a serious...
Well, I know, so where, do we, the staff, Earl, do we address any, how do we address a pool that's become a mosquito pit?
Oh, we have a mosquito ordinance, and anyone can call our mosquito control office, and they'll come out and inspect it, and take action to make sure...
And so they find a problem, and then do what? They find the problem, what happens?
They, Mr. Ashworth? You know, I talked to Ms. Pulver this morning, because Mr. Roan asked this question also, and she said that they will go out and check any mosquito issue, and they will try to work with the property owner to alleviate those problems. I don't know if they have any enforceable pieces.
Mrs. Knoll?
Yes.
May I interject here? At my time in public works, I did have the experience where an overzealous employee added some dunks to a swimming pool without permission.
Oh.
It damaged the liner, and the county had to pay. So my recommendation to us would be to do a little research on this before we make a decision.
We could cite a violation, and hold them accountable.
Yes, sir, you're correct.
Right, we could cite a violation.
Let's do it, then, because it presents all kinds of health issues.
Yes. Mr. Ashworth is here, and he can work with the public works staff and do the research that we need to do, and come back with some solution for it.
Okay.
Thank you.
It's not something for this, but there may be a different change in kind of...
Yeah, that's part of the mosquito...
Right, right. The mosquito ordinance does say that you're not supposed to have anything where there's a breeding ground, I mean, that's what the language says.
Look, I had, my neighbor loves pots, flower pots and stuff like that, and it's got its own little garden, and I go out there in the back of my house, and I end up getting eaten up. So I called mosquito control, they came out, and then they kind of, without permission, wandered over into the guy's property, turned over a few pots, which could probably kill a couple million mosquitoes, but then I went over later and told him, I said, I called him up, and really, and I said, hey, you mind if county comes over and looks for a mosquito? And he go, oh, yeah, go ahead, look for whatever you want. But, I mean, I kind of was worried about us going on somebody's property and doing stuff. So I just want to know, do we, you have the staff, can you address this? I mean, there should be no mosquito breeding ground around here, on purpose.
Thank you, Earl.
Or neglect.
Before we move forward, I need to close the public hearing, unless anybody else would like to speak to this issue. See, none, I've closed the public hearing, and let's move forward. I'll ask for a motion to propose ordinance 25-22.
Madam Chair, before you do that, I have a very small typographical edit that I would like to propose that I didn't notice previously. And it's just very minor, but it'll help with clarity. On page two, four lines from the bottom, after let, there is a semicolon. I would just ask that we strike the and there and move it to in front of where it says Section 303.2. If the board...
Do we have to have an R for that?
No. Well, I don't, I mean, yes, you do, but it's a de minimis Scrivener's error type change, so...
Is that 25, is 25-22R?
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll move it.
Roll call, please.
Discussion?
Discussion. We've had enough discussion.
Never had enough discussion. That's what we get paid, that's what we get paid a big bucks. Just, really, just a comment. I'm surprised that there is a safety standard that has a term limit. I would imagine that all safety standards would be in pruriturity. So, I'd be interested to see if there are any other places in the county code where, you know, we have a safety standard for two years, but after that, it's a free-for-all. So, we probably need to address, if we find any, we need to address that somewhere in the future, too. So, it's just my comment. Yeah, if you, yeah. Wasn't really part of the nice discussion. I didn't want to put you on the spot, but...
No, it's okay. So, the two-year limitation is after a permit is completed. So, after we do a final inspection, it applies to all permits. There are a few areas of the property maintenance code that we already enforce, but it's really, as far as people's property and the maintenance of that property, it really is kind of limited to the unsafe structures portion. So, and that's, we have to enforce that. The other part of it that we always have to enforce is the elevators. Elevators have to be maintained. Those are the only two that we don't have a choice. So, every other section in the maintenance code outside of Chapter 1 is up to you as the board to allow for me to enforce. So, there are a few that your predecessors have chosen that we use. I would say, I've never used any of the other that are in there, aside from the unsafe structures clause. But this one would be added to that. Outside of swimming pools, I really don't see, and the unsafe structures that we already have, I really don't see a reason to sort of be big brother for people's property.
Well, and I agree with that, too, but just big picture, across the county, if there are some safety standards that seem to have a sunset clause, let us know. Give us a recommendation so we can address it, as opposed to after the fact.
Right.
We're fixing our problem.
I mean, outside of unsafe structures, basically, everything expires after two years.
That's a state code, right?
Correct.
Yeah, that's a state code.
We also got maintenance.
We don't have any control of that.
We pass some for your district.
Also complaint-driven.
Well, we just pass maintenance for things for your district on houses.
Right.
And we still have...
That's where we capture that in the maintenance code.
So, we've had this property maintenance discussion before. I don't know if we want to go down that route of having to do property maintenance, but we can, if you want us to look at it.
No, 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 no.
But that's kind of what...
No, that's not, that's not what I'm asking.
But we can, we can look at some of the other sections, maybe, that are kind of similar to pools and those kinds of things.
Again, I was just surprised to hear that something, an obvious safety mechanism, such as making sure pools don't have easy access to underage kids, had a sunset clause of two years, basically.
Right, and that's why we're fixing it, yes.
So, we're fixing that tonight. So, I'm just asking, is anywhere else in the county code have a similar sunset clause of a safety standard? We should probably address that.
We can take a look and evaluate.
And that's, I'm just asking you, and if you don't, and if you find it later, let us know.
Okay.
But that's, you know.
We can do that.
Got me thinking now.
I think this, to me, could fall under fire and life safety.
I moved, I had moved the...
I believe that ordinance gives them equal authority to...
Well, you're doing discussion anyway, so.
Yeah, that's all I had.
So, move.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, gentlemen. Are there any more comments before we move forward? If not, we'll move.
Roll call.
The motion made by Mr. Shepherd is to adopt proposed ordinance number 25-22R to amend York County Code's Chapter 7.1 Building Regulations to incorporate provisions concerning the maintenance of pool enclosures. Mr. Drury?
Yes.
Mr. Roan?
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mr. Holroyd?
Yes.
Yes.
Mrs. Noel?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you very much. Item number seven is the York County Code changes of Sarah Wood, so you could come speak, Webb, rather.
All right. Thank you so much. Good evening, Madam Chair and members of the board. I will make this quick. I have a few code changes tonight. My name is Sarah Webb. I'm your Commissioner of Revenue. So, first off, just a quick overview of the six changes for tonight. Two in Chapter 14, which is covering licenses, and four in Chapter 21, which covers taxation. Starting with Chapter 14, the first change is Section 14-3, we're proposing to strike Section H, as you see on the screen. This section was originally meant to ensure license assessments were shared with the Treasurer's Office. With our new tax software system, both my office and the Treasurer's Office have real-time access to the records electronically, meaning printing them and physically handing them over to her would be redundant. Removing this would save time and printing costs, because it is thousands of pieces of paper to be printed.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Why is the last line of that struck out? The Treasurer shall report delinquents to the county administrator.
In the image, it's a screenshot. It doesn't encompass the whole Section H, but I can get you the exact language if you'd like. But that's just a screenshot of what is in your board memo documents.
Wouldn't we still want the Treasurer to make a report to the county administrator on delinquent reports?
You could do that. The only section that we're, I'm looking to take out is the physically printing and handing over, but if you would like to amend that, I don't know if Richard were able to do that, but...
My copy shows it struck out. That's why I'm reacting.
It, we can do that if he requests it. Of course, it can be done. This just would take out the requirement of, like, an annual delivery of that report.
Yeah, no issue with the printing.
I think, I think you, that's a valid point. I think it was...
Well, I think you were, why?
Yeah, why, why strike that?
The question is, why is it out?
Some of the requirements that are in the York County Code are redundant with what the Virginia State Code is, just because it says in the Virginia Code, just because it doesn't say in the York County Code does not mean that it's not a requirement that we're meeting in the Virginia Code.
So, are you saying you're meeting it at the Virginia Code?
Yes. This, if you take this out, we'd still have to do it. It just wouldn't be stated in the...
The requirement exists elsewhere, but I think Mr. Holroyd's point is a correct one, that when this was drafted, it just, I went too far and didn't, and struck that part. So, that's, that would be a valid, that would be a proper amendment to just have the red line end before the Treasurer.
Correct.
Yeah, leave the Treasurer shall report delinquents to the county administrator.
Yep, perfect.
Please continue.
Okay. All right. The next section is Section 14-27. So, this next change is a two-part change with proposed changes for license Section 1427 to add a new classification for aircraft taxation and change within the taxation Chapter 27-7.1 for the addition of a general business provision. We're adding a classification for sea plane and sightseeing tour operations, as well as a general classification to allow, to encompass for future business activity that may not fit the current categories we have listed. On the taxation side, the aircraft classification would mean we can assess the assets in accordance with state law and allow them to separate from personal property categories. Otherwise, they could be lumped into personal property taxation class, and because it doesn't qualify for the same tax relief that passenger vehicles do, it would be a much higher rate than maybe we would recommend. Based on that rate, and based on the rate of other localities, I would recommend a rate of 50 cents per $100 in assessed value, but it's up to your discretion as the board to vote as you see fit.
What is it now?
We don't have any.
We don't have any?
Yep. So, it may, some, some localities default to their personal property, so it would be $4 versus some localities do a lower rate, 50. The lowest one in the, in Virginia is 10 cents, and that's in the southwestern part of the state, but a majority of them are in the 50 cent range.
So, that's how you derive the 50% recommendation, 50 cent recommendation?
Yes. Based on our neighbors. In Newport News, they have a 50 cent as well, but in Williamsburg, they use their personal property rate. So, just using a lower rate than our neighbors would bring it into our county if they're, if it's between two localities.
Okay.
And the next change is Section 21-7.3 of the taxation chapter, and it deals with administrative refunds. This would affect all of Ernie's tax refunds, but in majority of cases, this is in relation to the real estate relief refunds for veterans. This code change would authorize a quicker, more streamlined process for issuing refunds to qualifying veterans by increasing the refund cap from $5,000 to $10,000. It doesn't change the amount of money, just the amount that would come to you as the board on the content calendar, or consent calendar. And in Section 21-42, we're recommending striking both Section 42 and the corresponding chart.
Any questions from the board?
So...
Not so far. I do in the next section.
Not so far.
The effective date for the provision has expired in this, in this slide here. In the old housing chart it referenced has already been updated on the Housing and Urban Development's website. Removing it will just keep our information up to date, so it's not referenced as old information. Last change is finally, Section 21-92 through 21-101. We're clarifying language related to the transient occupancy tax, sometimes referred to to the TOTX tax, to mirror this new state code language from House Bill 2383 that was passed this year. This allows our, aligns our county code with updated state-level requirements, and adds new provisions to improve administration compliance. This screenshot is only one section. It, I couldn't fit the whole thing on just one slide, but this is just for your reference. It has to do with remittance of tax from the third-party intermediaries, collection of taxes, and the reporting requirements. And it's in your red lines in the memo that you've received. With that, I'd happy to answer your questions.
21-97, Sarah.
Sure.
Why does it, in both A and B, it says no penalty shall exceed the amount of the tax owed. Why? That means no interest or fines can be added, because I don't owe anything more than what taxes.
In the, in the administrative refund section, is that what you're looking at?
In 21-97.
97.
97.
I just disagree with the last line in both, both statements, A and B.
I see.
I see what you're saying.
That's what's in the existing code.
It's wrong. It's wrong. That's why I disagree.
This is where people would just not pay their taxes and push it down the road, because there's no penalty, there's no, nothing. Like, if I owe $500 in taxes, and I'm not getting penalized, why would I pay the taxes?
Yes, sir. That could be, that could be changed, if you would like to add that.
So, can we, can we make that an amendment to?
What are you going to amend it to?
Just to remove that last line.
Okay, but is there a penalty anywhere in there?
But you'd have to put some kind of, some kind of penalty.
It already describes the penalty and the rate per annum on interest. But the problem with that last line is you're capped at whatever the tax is.
Yeah, that's right. Just delete that last, no such penalty as you're allowed to see. Yeah, the last sentence on A and B. Just strike through that.
Yeah, I remember when that was put in there.
Okay, that, that's...
I can look it up, but I'm almost positive this is required by, that this is a limitation imposed upon us by state law. And it only, it applies to the penalty and interest portion, not the tax portion. So, you collect the tax and a penalty on top of the tax, which cannot exceed. So, if the amount of tax you owe is $4,000, the amount of your penalty can't be more than $4,000. So, it could be $8,000 total? Yeah. Okay.
That's what I, that makes sense. You understand?
Oh, I see, yeah. It says the penalty.
Yes, the penalty cannot exceed...
Can't exceed the maximum tax. So, if you've got $500, your penalty can't be more than $500.
You have to pay the underpayment plus the penalty.
Well, I could argue that the penalty is having to pay the tax. That's why I'm struggling.
No, not...
No.
No.
It's just saying it can't exceed it.
It can't exceed that, right.
But what you want to avoid is somebody owes $500 in tax, and you charge a $50,000 penalty. Penalty is most definitely and legally distinct from the amount of the tax.
All right.
Yeah.
Okay, then I withdraw that point.
Are you all set with that? All right.
On the next page, again, last section, I guess it's 21-98, the last line. You know, if there is administrative costs, for instance, the cost of certified mail, or if there's legal costs, then I think those should be allowable, and they're not included in this list. So, administrative and legal costs, I would add to...
Is this a, is this a part of their proposed changes, or is this something that's already in there?
It's already in there, but it's...
I tell you, unless we know for a fact that what we're doing, we can do, and it's not part of the state code, I wouldn't change it now. You come back and tell us if it's a, you raise the issue, and if we go back, you do research, you find it's part of the state code, then, then, then we're stuck.
It's a moot issue, yeah.
So, let's all go change the stuff we're 100% sure about.
Let's take away a follow-up on that particular line, and if we need to change it. But what I'm asking is that all the costs that the county bear be chargeable.
Certainly, we can, we can, any changes you have, we can look into and bring it back if that's the pleasure of the board. But we, all of these changes for transient occupancy are in accordance with the Commissioner of Revenue Association and the Virginia Tax Code. Anything not touched, I would have to look into, but this was all done by a study from our committees and the Commissioner of Revenue Association.
Okay, I understand that.
Maybe state.
Just be able to answer his question, okay? If that's in there because of state code, tell us it's part of the state code. Unless you can tell us right now it's part of the state code. Is it?
I, I don't believe, I believe it's in accordance with state code, but I will, I will certainly see if it's an addition.
What portion are you talking about, Mr. Holroyd?
It's 21-98, and it's the last line. And it just says the...
Interest penalty and...
The penalty shall include interest and penalty, but it should also include any legal costs that we've incurred and any administrative costs. So, in this example, it says certified mail. Well, who's paying for that? Should be the, should be the delinquent party.
So, right, so basically...
So, let's take it away and ask, and follow up on state code and whether or not we're allowed to add those provisions in and bring it back if necessary. And I'll, I won't ask for an ordinance change or a revision tonight, but I will ask for the follow-up.
Okay, yes, sir.
So, so...
So, we'll, we'll vote on this tonight, and then you'll come back with an answer to his question. And if need be, then we'll amend what we've already done.
Or we're going to table it.
No, we don't have, we don't have, we don't have to table it.
That's more of what?
We don't have to table it.
We don't have to table it.
Because we can vote on what's here, and then if she sees the ability to add it, then that'd just be another ordinance change later on, so.
Yes.
That's fine.
Yeah.
Yes.
Move.
The default thing here, oh, you got to remember that in our ordinance, the staff has always been pretty good about this. We don't put stuff in there that we're not allowed to do, because of Dillon Rule, okay? So, unless we're just kind of feeling rich or something, and then when somebody's brain drives up on them and they just slip some stuff by us, then, then that's, that would be very, very unusual. So, my point is, again, we've raised the issue, look at it, tell us, come, just simply send us a text or tell the county administrator that this is part of the state code, okay? It reflects the state code. If it's just a, if the state code just gives us an option to do it or not do it, tell us that also. And then we can discuss it at that point.
Okay. But in the meantime, we should move this ordinance.
Yes.
All right. So, who's going to move the ordinance?
I'll move 25-20.
You know, don't we have to call and open a public hearing?
We have to have a public hearing.
Open the public hearing.
Public hearing, yeah.
I'll see anybody to speak. I open the public hearing. Anybody cares to speak to this issue. See no one. I will close the public hearing. Where's the pleasure of the board?
I will move 25-20.
R.
No, we're not making a change.
No, we did change.
Oh, that's right, yeah, yeah, R.
Changed the one.
That's right, we took that, strike that line at R.
Strike, strike at that one line, so, yes.
R.
That's correct, R.
I'll move 25-20R.
Correct.
The motion made by Mr. Roan is to adopt proposed ordinance number 25-20R to amend Chapter 14 and Chapter 21 of the Code of York County and to keep the Senate stating the Treasurer shall report any delinquents to the county administrator. Mr. Roan?
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mr. Holroyd?
Yes.
Mr. Drury?
Yes.
Mrs. Noel? Motion carried.
Yes. Thank you very much. Now, we'll move to the consent calendar. Now, we'll move to the consent calendar. Number eight is approval of minutes. Number nine is the application of proposed resolution R.25135 to amend previously approved special use permit by authorizing a minor expansion of a storage, shed, sales, and display facility on property located at 6539 Moretown Road. Number 10 is approval of mutual aid agreement, consider the adoption of proposed resolution R.25-133, to execute mutual aid agreement between the county and the armed forces experimental training activity. Number 11 is acceptance and appropriation of Stormwater Legal Assistance Fund, that's SLAPP, for grant number 25-06 Brightwood Stream Restoration Project. Number 12 is acceptance and appropriation of FY26 PSAP NG911 Additional Funding Grant Program. 13 is request for refund for real estate taxes from disabled veterans, and that's it. Is there any item that anybody would like to discuss?
Please, no.
If not, I will adjutant a motion to approve.
So, move.
That's it, yeah.
Thank you. Both, call a roll, please.
The motion made by Mr. Holroyd is to approve the consent calendar as submitted. Mr. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mr. Holroyd?
Yes.
Mr. Drury?
Yes.
Mr. Rowan?
Yes.
Mrs. Noel?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you very much. There's no new business, but we are going into closed session, but please take us there.
In accordance with section 2.2371A1 of the Code of Virginia, I move that the Board of Supervisors convene in closed meeting to consider a personnel matter involving the appointment of individuals to boards and commissions. And secondly, prospective business or industry or expansions of existing business or industry in accordance with section 22371A5 of the Code of Virginia, I move that the Board of Supervisors convene in closed meeting to discuss a prospective business or industry or expansion of an existing business or industry where no previous announcement has been made.
Okay, thank you very much. We will adjourn. The next regular meeting of the York County Board of Supervisors will be held at 6 o'clock Tuesday, September 2, 2025.
I need a roll call.
You got a roll call, yeah.
Roll call, sorry. Roll call.
Mr. Holroyd?
Yes.
Mr. Drury?
Yes.
Mr. Rowan?
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd?
Yep.
Mrs. Noel?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you so much, staff.
Now, you can close.
It's done. Safe and ease.